This is a regularly scheduled Town Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, June 13, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Jeff seconded it. Yeah, anybody want to discuss it further? Paul's unfair, say aye. Okay, so then we have a bunch of minutes that we haven't approved for a while, so the regular meeting minutes were April 11, 2019, May 9, 2019, and then the Surfside Crossing Deliberation meetings, minutes, May 20, May 28, May 31, June 7, and June 10. I didn't have any changes. Does anybody have anything they want to add or change?
I didn't see any.
No? Okay. So someone make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I will. I'll make that motion.
All right, Susan makes a motion. Jeff, you want to second that? Jeff seconds it. Any further discussion? No. Paul's unfair, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so moving right along to 2018 Surfside LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B. So this is the 11th hour. Oh yeah. You want to take? You want to do the phone?
No.
No, I. Please, should we?
You need me to dial for you?
I can do it. I just fire it as you.
You're in charge.
I don't want to touch the phone. Just put it in front of Jeff and I'll give him the instructions.
Lisa, what do you do?
What do you do, Lisa?
You hit nine.
Nine and nine.
Yeah, and then the number, and then after that one connects, you'll see some of that says, comes up that says conference, and you hit that to get the second person.
What's the number, Ed?
Six, uh, 617-654-1718. It's George.
Now I go into his number. Yeah, could you remind her where she is?
And then I do conference?
Yeah, 38.
Yeah, then you conference.
It's Jeff, it's EBA.
Hi Jeff.
Oh shit.
That's right.
Excuse me, I may.
That's right.
Oops. Nine, what?
What's Ed's number offhand, do you know?
Ed's is 617-429-8242.
8242?
Correct.
Now, Lisa, does it say complete? Do I do?
Marshand.
Hi Ed, it's Jeff.
Hold on, I think you just hit.
Hey Jeff.
I think you hit complete, and then it connects them both.
I think we might have them both, so complete.
Yeah. It has the instructions.
Yep, they're both on there.
George, are you there?
Are you there?
I'm still here, yep.
All right.
And Ed, you're here as well?
Yes, I am.
All right, so please talk into the mics, they're not amplifying, but they're, pick up the TV. Well, I'm in color. All right, so just a couple of sort of housekeeping things. Lisa, do you have, you have a packet that we're going to give to Eleanor?
Yes.
The final HDC stuff.
That's right, I just gave it to her.
All right, so George, we have given that to Eleanor.
Can I just interject on that?
Sure.
Is that, does that consist of two markups of, of the certificate of appropriateness sheets?
No.
Or just one?
Just one in blue.
Just one in blue, and then you have all the, all your markup of the architectural plan.
That's right, and then I agree that we should delete the picture of the barn that I had just included for informational purposes.
Perfect. Okay, great, good.
Okay, so now we're to comments about the, well, it's not really a draft, it's still a draft. The modifications can still be made to the comprehensive permit. I had a few comments, but I, go ahead. George, do you want to talk about that?
Uh, yeah, can I address a couple of, um, just address, sum up where we're at?
Let me turn the volume up a little bit.
Bear with me one second, sorry. Um, okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board, George Pucci from KP Law, Town Council's office. Um, the version, uh, and by the way, I'd like to be with you there today, but I thought the best use of the time would be to be here to incorporate any last minute revisions that may get voted to the permit. So here I am, participating by phone. So the, um, the draft that you should have in front of you today, for discussion purposes, is the one that I sent to Eleanor at 10:46 a.m. Um, so if you have another version, unless you have notes on it that you need to reference during this meeting, I suggest you just discard it and use this one version that I'm going through. Um, and so on that version, um, it has, it's a draft comprehensive permit with conditions at a 60 unit project, as discussed at the last deliberation session. Um, a couple of things that were added, um, for it, or, um, that are added even after this close to final draft that was sent to you is Lisa had suggested a condition concerning final review of the, of the architecture for the recreational building, which I added. And the reason for that is that there was nothing available that she could mark up as she did on the other revised plan. So that condition is noted in a, um, you know, in what will be the final version. And then we've confirmed about the documents for the appendix. Um, Ed, the Chair, Ed Tool, and I had a chance to discuss some final comments that Ed had on this draft, so I just wanted to run through those with you quickly. That's why it's, um, important for you to have this draft in front of you. Uh, if you go to page four of the draft, and there are just a few of these, so I'm just going to run through them with you. Um, on page four of the draft, uh, in the first full paragraph after section B, it talks about even then, uh, more than 800 residents came in opposition to the project, causing an overflow to standing room only in the auditorium. Uh, we're revising that to have a period at auditorium, and we're deleting that language, um, and a flow of people outside the doors. So it will read even then, more than 800 residents came in opposition to the project, causing an overflow to standing room only in the auditorium. Uh, the next, uh, uh, two paragraphs down from there, the board confirmed, um, the area, area where 40Bs are concentrated, and it's actually a half mile radius of the project site as opposed to a one mile radius, so we're making that change. Ed also has suggested, and I agree, to add in that paragraph information about the comparative bedrooms per unit, uh, bedrooms and units per acre on the other, uh, projects, so that will be added into a final draft. Then if you go several pages down, um, Ed made another edit to paragraph 31 in the conditions on page 16 on the affordable units with central air. Uh, we're just adding that applicant has stated on the record that all units will have central air conditioning. Um, and then, then something, uh, that was substantive that you discussed last time, and I was just frankly a little bit confused about it. If you go to the conditions about the public water connection, um, I had added, added several conditions.
What, what number is that, George? What number is it?
65 through, did somebody, did somebody have a question?
Yeah, what number are you on?
So now I'm flipping all the way down to page 20. The, the section for additional conditions concerning public water connection.
Okay.
So we have paragraph 65 through 71, and then Ed had added, as was discussed at the last session, um, that applicant has stated about the, um, landscape irrigation by private well. So I'm going to add a condition there that the applicant has stated, and the board imposes a condition, that landscape irrigation shall be provided by private well and not the public water supply. Then I have a sentence of, um, the applicant taking necessary steps to protect the capacity of other private, um, water supplies in the area, if they're going to do that. Um, then going down, and I'm, again, I'm not addressing any of the final edits that were on this version, but these further ones that would not be in front of you. When we get down to page 28, um, on condition 102, Ed had talked about your typical Form J requirement for, uh, building permits on the release of lots. So, um, in paragraph 102, capital letter A, we're adding, um, a, a copy of the request for a building permit, comma, along with the required Form J under the local subdivision regulations, so we're going to add that revision. And then I just wanted to address, um, so those are, those are some further and final changes that would be included in the final draft that would get filed. Um, I also just received some, um, further edits from, um, Ed Marshand, uh, which I'll make. Um, they're largely stylistic and just clarifications here and there, but there are some issues that, um, Ed had also identified that require some further discussion with you instead of just putting them onto a, um, final draft. Um, and so the, the process that I would recommend following, and Ed has a motion prepared on it when you get there, would be, this decision now is in close enough of a final form that really you could vote, you know, reach a decision or vote on the project, um, in accordance with the draft, uh, in front of you, subject to any, subject, and authorizing the Chair to make any final, um, edits to the, to the final signed version that's being filed with the town clerk, consistent with any further discussions that you have today. Discussion, you know, deliberations are still open, so you're still free to completely, you know, do a turnaround on it, but if you're going to stick with what you decided to date, um, this is, you know, getting into a close to final form that you should be comfortable signing the signature page, and then any final, um, edits as we've discussed them today will be, will be put on the, um, the final draft. And you're, it, it will certainly be made available for you to, to read before it gets, you know, filed with the town clerk. So, um, what I anticipate doing if the vote goes forward today is, um, I'll make all the final edits to the document today, uh, following your meeting, and I'll send that back out to Eleanor, um, and you, you know, you'll have a chance, like I said, to, to read it, you know, before, um, it would get filed with the town clerk tomorrow. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, does anybody have any other edits or additions or conversation about what you read?
Oh Ed, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, I forgot one important one, because Susan had brought it up before about the more protection for the buffer zone area, and that was one important, um, thing I talked to about with Ed today. So we're in condition 20 concerning buffer zones on page, um, the buffer zones.
15.
On page 15, uh, condition 20, we're adding all that language. Um, Ed had had some suggested language and then pulled a portion of the permit, and that, the, the final edit in addition on that will be consistent with what Susan had raised and, uh, you know, what you've had on other permits for buffer zones. And that, now, now I'm done talking, apologize.
Okay, just, just as a summary, it basically just talks about, um, spacing of trees, if there's, you know, if there's large gaps in the natural vegetation, we can stipulate that trees have to be filled in, I think every 10 feet. Um, so anyway, that language was going to be added as well. Um, so as George alluded to, I mean, those, those were my edits and thoughts. Um, did anyone else have anything else they wanted to add or change, or?
I just had one question in, uh, on page 10, the first paragraph of, uh, section six. There's, uh, like the fifth line down, I think there's a reference to the conditions in 10 through 12. Is that, is that correct? Because it says dimensional requirements, and I, I wasn't sure if you were referring to the dimensional requirements in 13, 14, and 15 related to the, um, single family and multifamily.
I think, I think, oh, hold on.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like 10 through 12 were, were, were an old iteration.
Oh, did you change it?
No, I'm, I'm.
I still think it never got changed.
I don't think it got changed. I, I agree, it, it looks like.
13, it would be 13 through 15, right?
Yeah, I think it's 13 through 15, uh, unless you want to include.
The pool.
The pool.
Because that has a.
And the, um, recreational.
The recreational is 15.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, those are the ones that speak to lot sizes, the dimensional requirements. The pool doesn't really reflect that, but. It's a good catch.
So is it, uh, Jim, so you're right, exactly, that, that was incorrect, that should have been revised, um, but what number is now, is it, um, 13 to 15?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, thank you for catching that, that was one that's got to buy me, uh, 13 to 15.
I saw that too.
Got it.
This is an extra period on condition 21.
Condition 21.
It says period parking.
Yeah, there's an extra period at the beginning. I don't think that's.
We want to make it perfect.
And, um, I had a couple of comments.
I see that extra period, yep, got it.
Go ahead, Jim.
In section, uh, or in paragraph 87, uh, this is mine, George, but it, you refer to occupancy permit, is that a defined term?
Eighty-seven, um.
I don't know.
Oh, correct. Um, I don't believe so, no, it's just the normal language, so that should not be capitalized.
Okay.
That was per eight, what, what that was, was a condition that Ed, Ed Marshand had suggested from, um, he gave me a list of things that should be included if they weren't already, so that's why it got transferred that way, but those should be small letter O and P.
And I think, yeah. Because I, I took that from another document, I think we've been using certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, we, we have, that's why I brought that up. I mean, I think it's pretty clear anyway, even if that got in there, but yeah, we've used certificate of occupancy.
No, that is better. These things matter, that's very helpful. Um, that's much better, thank you, uh, for every, for which a, for which a certificate of occupancy is issued, occupancy is issued, yeah, and then it repeats on the next line. Perfect.
Okay. Um, I had one question about 94, the marketing, and I, I have a feeling this is standard language, that Ed, you inserted this paragraph, uh. Uh, it says at least 70% affordable units, um, with a Nantucket preference. Can we increase that, or did, was there a reason? Okay.
That's the DHCD maximum.
That's what I figured.
And even that is subject to all applicable federal state, um, fair housing rules, but to date, uh, no one's objected to providing a local preference for 70% of the affordable units.
Okay, and it does say at least, so. Um, and then the, the second sentence there, so the, the board has an affirmative duty to provide evidence that, um, there's a need for local preference? I thought that's what, I thought that's what this is all about, affordable housing, and I, I mean, what do we, what do we have to do?
DHCD makes, wants to be sure that a local preference, uh, does not prevent, uh, affirmative fair housing being achieved.
Oh, I got you, okay. It just seemed odd to me that we would have to show it.
Right.
If we didn't, then they wouldn't have to provide.
It should not be an issue.
Yeah, I realize.
You have to submit that information to, uh, Mass, Mass, I was going to, because the town is the one who wanted local preference, the burden follows upon you, but.
I got you.
As I say, uh, the, the applicant's obligated to help you do that.
Okay. That was, that's it for me.
Anybody else?
Ed, I do have, uh, some questions.
Go ahead.
After the board's done.
I think we're finished here. Yeah?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I had a, a question in terms of, I know that the maximum number of units is 60, the next, maximum number of bedrooms is 206. Was there any discussion in terms of the fungibility of single family and duplex units? I know you don't want more than two of the fourplexes, and I didn't know whether it would make sense, I had drafted some language, let me just read it. You may or may not want this, but I said, "The building mix between single family buildings and duplex buildings can be adjusted by the applicant, subject to the overall 60 unit limitation and 206 bedroom limitation. However, the maximum number of fourplex buildings allowed is two." I didn't know whether you wanted to offer that.
Let's think about it, um, all right. What do you think?
Parking's a little, right, the only difference would be the parking, right? Because the duplexes require one space per bedroom, and the houses would only have two. So there'd be less.
Well, they, they would have to comply with all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Simply whether or not.
Did we talk about?
We did talk about.
I thought we did talk about it, and we ended up with the duplexes for some reason, but I don't, we had talked about.
Didn't we, didn't we say a max, like duplexes would maximum number of whatever we decided, so that if he, if the applicant wanted to move them around, they could, but they couldn't make more duplexes than the maximum?
Right.
Well, that's definitely what we discussed, I mean, I think, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, Ed, you're saying if you had, you know, there could be, potentially be more duplexes and fewer single family homes, I mean, I, with the net, net.
If, if in terms of trying to satisfy the dimensional requirements of the respective types, they thought it was in their interest to substitute some duplexes for single family lot, should you give them that flexibility?
I mean, I guess my feeling at this point is it's Thursday before the Friday that we have to record this, and we talked about this a lot, I mean, do we want to change it at this point?
No. And I think if you made more duplexes, it's, I think, I see it as a more intense use on the lot, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I will say that if someone came back at some future date with some reasonable argument for something, you know, obviously we would listen to anything, but absent that, right now, it just seems to me to be, you know.
I think, I think, Ed, I.
Ed, I don't, I'm not, I'm not proposing this, but because I missed some of the discussion at that meeting when I was at a graduation, I just wanted to bring this up.
I'd leave it as it is.
Yeah, I, I think our thought was that he could do less duplexes, give him the freedom that he wasn't tied to the number of duplexes if he wanted to do more single family homes instead.
I don't, I don't want to, you know, it, it's late in the process, I don't want to disrupt the progress they made.
Yeah, I, I think in the.
Again, as Ed said, if, if, you know, the applicant come, come back with any kind of a modification, and you could consider at that point, when you have better information on the progress.
Right, if the dimensional requirements force some issue that seems unreasonable, I'm sure that the board will, will look at it, that, and, but trying to figure out, I, I, I think we leave it as is.
I agree.
I found, I found another typo, by the way.
Okay, hold on. Let's, let's finish this issue. So are we good on that, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna pass on that, so Lisa found another typo.
Page 13, item J. It should say the maximum number of five bedroom units, the word five was left out.
Let me get back to that page.
I, I, I made that correction in the, um, markup correcting that I sent to George.
Oh, okay.
Where is it? What, which one?
Number J, letter J, on page 13.
Yep.
Should specify five bedroom units.
Oh, yes. Yes, oh, yep, I didn't notice that. Maximum number of five bedroom. Yes, okay, thank you.
Yep.
One of the other, I, sort of, decision should be, and I know this was discussed, I don't think I saw it in the decision, but that we wanted the applicant to remain responsible until all the units are sold and all the infrastructure is completed. We had similar language in Satchin's path, and the suggestive language would be, "The applicant shall be responsible for completion and maintenance of all infrastructure in compliance with this comprehensive permit decision until all of the units in the development are constructed and sold. Thereafter, the homeowners association and/or the condominium trust shall bear such responsibility. The applicant may collect fees from homeowners as appropriate and as defined in the homeowners association and/or condominium trust documents for the maintenance of the infrastructure." But the primary point, uh, is that you don't want to be dealing with a homeowners association or the condo trust. The, the applicant should have that responsibility of having to coordinate, um, with the homeowners association or the trust.
I interject, uh, that's right, that should have been included. Can you send me that, Ed?
Yes, it's in my, on the cover letter that I included with my edit, George.
Okay.
That language is there.
Yep, do, do, what section should we put that in?
Uh, wherever you think it's appropriate, probably, I don't know whether it's an administration or, I think you can, I, I can make a suggestion.
Yeah, did you give me that exact language you just read off?
Yes.
All right, good, all right, because I don't want to reword it, I like the way you just read it.
No.
All right.
I think it's fine, and, and much of that is Satchin's path. The other question I had, we talked about the $200,000 traffic mitigation payment. I always like to see a date on which that, on, on when the payment is due.
That's a good point.
I plugged in, uh, at the issuance of the initial building permit, I'm not sure how the board feels about that, whether you think it should be later than that, uh, whether it should be in, uh, instruments, uh, but whatever, you, you should have some kind of, uh, due and payable date on that.
Okay, um, are you finished for now, Ed?
Uh, no, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Which I think you'll all agree with.
Can we, can we address that one?
Yeah, let me address that first, I mean.
Should we have that, when does the board think that should be paid? Because I'll just put that in per Ed's suggestion.
Well, first of all, I, I think we're all in agreement on Ed's language about the homeowners association, et cetera, right?
That's.
Yes. Um, so then we get to, when, when should the traffic mitigation be paid? Um, I, I would think at the onset, before they get a permit. Um, or what is everyone, or, I'm open to suggestion, what do you think?
Yeah, what did we, do we, do, do we know what we did for Satchin's path?
No.
No.
I don't think Satchin's.
Was that the, I think, I think it was on. It was at the... I think, I think it was on actually Rugged Scott.
You're right. It was Rugged Scott.
Payment, but it was at the initial issuance of the initial building permit.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that's when you'd want it.
I agree.
Okay, so, I mean, that would be a condition precedent to issuance of a building permit in that section, George. Don't you think?
Okay. I think that's what Ed suggested.
Yes. And I would just put it right in the... Where you talk about the $200,000 payment, all you have to do is add when it's due and payable. Right.
All right, there are... Before we leave the HOA issue, I know that in the past, we have had the developer cede the HOA, if you will, to the tune of, I think it was $250 a lot. I think that was at... I don't remember if it was Rugged or...
I think it was at both of them.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Well, so, I mean, I think that makes sense that to... So that there is a kitty in there to begin with, and the $250 maybe seems a little shy, only because that was years ago, and things aren't going down. So how does everyone feel about that?
I think we should follow what we did with the two passed ones.
Including the dollar amount, $250?
No, I think the dollar amount should... Those were two... What was that, $2,000?
Well, Saichem's wasn't that long. Well, it was longer. I mean, it was probably four, five. I don't remember when it was, but...
Yeah, but Rugged Scott was a while ago.
So should we just say $400 a lot? Does that seem like... I think I did the math, and that's a roughly 3% increase from the time it was done at Rugged. I mean, arguably, Saichem's should have gone up too. This is going back to Rugged Scott.
But Saichem's also didn't have a rec... They don't have a recreation building or any... They don't have a lot of that stuff, so they don't have any of that stuff. I think $400 sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So are you... Ed and George, you okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Ed, you had another request, and I'm not sure if it's in there.
Wait, before you get to that, so where is that going? I mean, we're at the point, I can't have, like, be thinking through concepts anymore. I just need to be able to plug stuff in.
So there's language that addresses this that was in the, I think, Friday night I sent you, the excerpts from the Saichem's and Rugged Scott conditions from their comp permits, George. And this language, this language is in there.
Yeah, we go in the homeowners section.
Yeah, the homeowners. And the other one that Ed had brought up, and we had talked about, was making sure that the other two have had language about the voting rights, so that the percentage matches up, so the fair market value owners can't overrun the affordable owners in voting. And I sent you that as well, and I didn't see that in here, although I may have missed it.
No, it's not in there, and it's a good point. It had to do with, uh, I can't, you know, seventy... Each group had, uh... Yeah, Susan will look it up, and then we'll read it to you.
It was condition L. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
In the Rugged Scott, 3.2, small letter L. And it says, "There shall be no change in the bylaws of the association, the homeowners association, without the approval of 75% of each of the two income levels of the owners as follows." And then it just broke it out, 75% and 25%.
Right, and I was...
A little tricky here is...
We don't have anything.
I don't think we ever got adequate information from the applicant on the governance documents. I don't know if the homeowners association is going to consist of the single-family homes and duplex homes, along with a separate unit, which is the condo trust. Just don't know how that's going to work. But I think we should... Can still draft this in a way that models what we did on Beach Club.
Yeah, and I would think it would go in the same section.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me ask. Is everybody in agreement with that? I mean, we talked about it, it just didn't get in, so... So we would include that? Yeah?
Yeah.
Can Ed Marshon get George that information, so he's got it?
The...
I'll do that.
That we just read? I sent it... He has it. I sent it to him on Friday night. But I can reset it right now.
I'll just modify it though for, um...
Oh, okay. Yeah, right. Sorry, sorry.
I'll just do the arithmetic.
Thank you.
The... I had a couple more.
Yeah, and I should note, just for time constraints, and I apologize that there's a lot to be included in this. I, you know, there are just certain things that I wanted to note that still weren't in there, but, um, you know, I haven't been able to synthesize all the other permit information and...
I think most of it's in there, George. I think it's just...
Time constraint prevented me from taking everything and, uh, figuring out new language for it, so I apologize, Susan.
Oh, no, it's...
I definitely got that from you.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it.
All right, so...
The...
Go ahead, Ed.
Uh, we want to make sure there's specific language in terms of a sort of safety protection plan for the early buyers. So I took a shot at some language that says, "Prior to the initiation of each construction phase, applicants shall provide for review and approval by the building inspector a proposed safety plan that documents how residents occupying units will be protected during construction of future phases." Pretty general, but I think I does... It does the trick. We spent a huge amount of this, of time on this topic for Saichem's.
Well, they had a specific phasing plan that we were talking about. I mean, and they were phasing the infrastructure. If you go... Obviously, the developer has the option to go in and put all of the infrastructure in, and then it's a slightly different question, but I have no problem with that language. Is there anybody else?
Okay, and George, that's on my cover letter on that email. Good, great. The, I think, final comment I had was the... There was a condition that said the interior finishes of the affordable units have to be the same as the interior finishes of the market-rate units. I don't think that's reasonable. On all the... On almost all the homeownership 40B projects I work on, there is a difference. What's important is that the quality of the finishes on the affordable units still be reasonable. And DHCD documents talk about this, saying that there can be differences on the interior finishes. So I had drafted some language that just says, "If, if..." I didn't encourage differences, but I said, "If there are differences on the interior finishes, the interior finishes for the affordable units must be of reasonable quality."
How does everyone feel about that?
I think it's just the way that it is. I mean, that's how it is at Rugged Scott.
I mean, reasonable quality.
Define reasonable quality.
Yeah, it's a tough one to define, but by the same token, if DHCD allows for that, you know. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, uh...
Because you could also see if somebody were to buy a market-rate unit, they can change the finishes to whatever they wanted.
Yeah. Even though it's fake, I could live with it.
It just protects you from the downside. If they come in and propose some really, you know, $2 kitchen cabinet, you've got something to argue about.
I wish we could just define reasonable.
Yeah, or do we... Who determines whether it's reasonable? How do we know what they're putting in even? Should there be language to that effect, that the specs should be...
I feel like we got them for Saichem's.
Well, what normally I like to do, and we asked for this, was ask them to provide building specs for both the market and affordable units, and if there are any differences, they should define those.
Well, what I'm getting at is, can you just put that into that clause? That that's a requirement?
Yeah, I think I can drive something on that. I'll say, if there are differences, the applicant should submit specifications for the materials specified for the affordable units, which differ from those specified for the market-rate units, for review by the board.
And again, it would seem to me that that could be in the section of precedent to issuance of building permits. They would have to give us that.
Okay, I can do that.
You okay with that, George?
Yep.
Is everyone else okay with that?
The, uh...
Yes, go ahead.
Susan, you may have forwarded this to George too, but I thought condition fourteen in Saichem's path, where they talked about the split-rail upper fence was pretty good.
I thought there was language in there that Jeff suggested to George about the split-rail fence going around the perimeter with hay bales and it was the perimeter, it was the...
I thought I put Jeff's in, and that you found inadequate, but...
It seemed adequate to me.
I thought it did, but I, you know, I'm not, I'm not being contentious either if...
Well, no, didn't it cover the limit of work, Jeff? It covers the entire limit of work, so, uh...
No, that should do it. That should do it. I don't think this adds it even more than that. It did say, and again, I don't recall, George, you may know it, Jeff. The split-rail, for Saichem's, it said, "The split-rail fence shall be erected prior to application for any building permits. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining the fence in good order until all the homes in the development are constructed and sold. Thereafter, the homeowners association shall bear such responsibility."
Do you remember what number it was, Jeff, that you put in?
Page thirty, condition 109. Prior to commencement, the work at the site, a split-rail fence shall be installed to delineate the buffer zones in order of work. An erosion control barrier, hay bales stacked end-to-end, insulation fence firmly anchored with six inches of soil shall also be placed on the project side of the split-rail fence. The erosion control barrier shall be inspected by the board or its representative prior to work commencing on the site, and shall be maintained until all the sturdy areas have been stabilized to the satisfaction of the board or its representative.
All right, I do think that Ed's...
This is different.
Yeah, this one was different. I think it could be in either part of this, that they have to... The developer has to maintain this fence until the whole...
I think that's the only thing that would need to be added.
All right, so it can't be allowed to rot away and...
Yeah, I mean, this one, the one from Saichem's past, path, is talking about how it's how it's preserve... It's not just, you know, during, prior to construction or during construction, that this is to remain permanently protected open space, consistent with MGL Chapter 40A, Section nine. So it's, it's different because it's under...
Well, that's more about the buffer zone, right?
Yeah, but it's about the split... It's about the installing, installing and maintaining this fence until everything is sold.
Yeah.
Is it... Is our, is buffer zone fencing in our decision written the same way, that it has to stay in perpetuity?
No, but that's what we're talking about, adding that. We should add language about that it has to remain in perpetuity and in good working order until the homeowners association takes over. Ed? Can you do that?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just make, add it to Jeff's section.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think condition fourteen on Saichem's path does a good job. You just need to cut out the stuff that, you know, references specific lots on that plan.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Ed, did you have anything else?
I, just a, um, question about the waivers.
Yeah, I was hearing...
And I haven't looked at the most recent, um, version. Condition 13928. And I don't even... I just didn't understand what we were saying there. We said, this was about written certification required by Nantucket HDC. And we said, granted in part, but denied as to HDC administrator approval of final plans as board designee under the condition in the comprehensive permit decision. That wasn't clear to me.
I worded it that way because typically, you need a, um, the certificate of appropriateness to get the occupancy permit or a building permit, and they're not, they can't require that here because they follow the certificate of appropriateness falls within their jurisdiction. But what they, the board does, they told me, is, um, use the HDC administrator to do their final review of, like, as-built plans about, you know, to review for conformance and with their decision, so that's the reason for that. In other words, we're not requiring a certificate of appropriateness, but we still want HDC administrator as the board's designee as we set forth in the permit.
So do you have some?
I can, if you want to clarify that further, that's fine, but that's why that's...
Yeah, I can't clarify because I don't understand it.
So it's...
If you think this is okay, that's fine.
Well, it's... Yeah, it's right here. Basically, at the end of a project, the HDC administrator has to go out and confirm that the building is built per, I guess in this case, whatever the final plans that are going to be submitted to us and we approve. So we don't want to waive that that section. We want them to have to get, have the HDC still go and do their final site sign-off to make sure it's been built in compliance with the final drawings.
Well, you could make the argument, it was granted that they don't have to go to the HDC, but they have to come back to the ZBA. If I'm hearing you correctly, George, they have to come back to the ZBA, but we've designated, somewhere else in the permit, it speaks specifically about the HDC compliance officer. We've designated him. So yes, we've granted the waiver because they don't have to go to the HDC, but they have to go to us, but we've designated the HDC compliance off... I don't know what he's called exactly.
Compliance officer or something.
So I think it's okay. It is a little little odd, but yeah, they don't have to go to the HDC. They have to come back to us.
But I don't think, I think denied as to HDC administrator approval of final plans.
Can't we just leave it as is? Because he's acting as our designee, so we have to define that here.
Yeah, I think it should be left as is. I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's confusing if you know what it is. I mean, there's a condition in the permit that...
Could we just say, "But must comply with condition wherever you say, what Susan just said."
What did I say?
I think she said it.
That's, we're gonna... There is a process. It's just not... It's just not going to be
Oh, right.
by the book, the way the HDC normally does it. And we've got that as a condition in the decision.
Which is what this says. It says granted in part, but denied as to HDC administrator approval of final plan as board's designee under the condition in the comprehensive permit decision. So the, the condition is in there.
Is, is this...
Okay.
I think it's okay.
Very good.
Because the...
Did you make it two sentences? I don't know.
It's a little confusing, again, if you don't know what it, what it's referring to, but...
Is this refer, this is supposed to be referring to the site inspection?
Yes.
That's not clear to me.
I feel like it needs to be more clear, because if it's not clear to us and we have to talk about it, then it's not going to be clear to anybody else who reads this.
Okay, well then, what is your thought on making it more clear? How would it be more clear for you?
It's not really the HDC administrator's approval of the final plans. It's the HDC administrator's final inspection of the premises to make sure it's in compliance with the plan.
Right, so, so the only thing we're, the only thing we're denying is we're, we're allowing them to not get a certificate of appropriateness.
Right. I thought this was broken into multiple, um, waiver requests.
Can't we just say granted? Granted waiver is limited to...
Having to appear at the...
Yeah, having to appear, or, no, um, issuance of the, the certificate of appropriateness.
Well, that's in the condition above. That, that's taken care of.
Written certification of over by the Nantucket.
Yeah, oh, that's to get the occupancy permit, yeah, I mean, I think...
So this, oh, this is like...
So you're not really, you're not waiving it.
Because this is, this is the sign off for the CO.
That's right, so you're not, you have waived the requirement for the certificate of appropriateness up above, but we are not waiving the fact that we need certification by the HDC that it's built in compliance to the final plan. So wouldn't that just be denied?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we're, we're, in my, and George can speak to this, but we're granting that they don't have to go to the HDC.
That's up there, ahead of us.
No, I'm saying as the, they, they have to come, it's in essence coming through us, even though we've designated the HCC compliance officer as the person.
Right.
So they don't have to make application, they don't have to go to the HCC office and get the sign off. They do, of course, but it's in essence coming through it. I'm not saying it says that, but that was the intention.
No, no, I mean, I'm trying to figure this out.
Yes.
So the way it's worked with Greg and Scott, as you know, identical request is that building permit, application is submitted to the building department, and then the HDC step has come to me, and then Ed eventually has been authorized to sign a letter that I have drafted based on drawings that are submitted. And I checked that the drawings matched what was approved with the comp permit. So the final plans and final architectural drawings that were approved with the, in connection with the comp permit are the ones I based everything on. And if there were variations, I went back and said, this is different. This window treatment is, that, that's different wide, and we have to...
But, but there's no site inspection? It's all based on...
The site inspection post-construction has been John Haddon or whoever is acting as the, the HDC inspector. So yes, for the issuance of a CO,
Right.
HDC inspector has been the HDC administrator. But the pre, the, the, in place of a COA process and going before the HDC has been through me.
Right.
Right.
But I think this is specifically under the occupancy permit section. Talking about the inspection.
I want to make sure we had something really that's clear and concise in terms of how I'm going to be processing these things when they start to come through.
Right.
All right, where, where is the condition about, I thought it was in here about, but it should have been condition about the fact that they have to go to the HCC compliance officer or whatever he's called, uh, the administrator has to look at the completed project, completed house. Is that, is that in here?
Yeah, I'll find it, yes.
I'm not seeing it under conditions prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy.
Should be under the building permit, I think.
Well, maybe it's just not really in the right place then, because it should be, you need that when you get... Here it is, I'm sorry, it's 144 on 36. It's in the right place. The applicant shall submit final architectural plans to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review and approval whether the plans conform with the requirements of the board's conditions concerning exterior architectural features and designs. Okay, so to Lisa's point, they're not submitting final architectural plans per se. They're, they're, we want to make sure that the building was built in compliance with the plans. The, so that has to be made clear. Correct, Lisa, is that what you were saying?
Yeah. Exactly.
So it's not that you just come in and say, yeah, this is what we built, here are the final plans, because you, you need somebody to verify that, because sometimes it happens that people don't do what they say.
Where are you in the...
I'm on page 36, Condition 144. I mean, it should be something like the applicant shall, shall submit a request, I'm not going to word this properly, it should submit a request to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review and approval of the completed
Project?
Structures. In any structure that's built there...
For conformance with the requirements, right?
Yeah, for conformance with the requirements of the board's conditions concerning exterior architectural features and designs. Bless you.
Ed, is it a, a two-step process that the, a, a, HDC person has to review the building permit plans? And then, once the building is completed, for conformance with the plans that are referenced in your decision?
It's a little...
And then it has to review the building? Or is it just a one-step building? You go ahead and build it, and then it's got a real problem?
It's, it's different, because under normal circumstances, you would have to submit your certificate of appropriateness and your stamped drawings with your building permit application. But since we won't have that certificate of appropriateness, we don't have that step. And that's what I think Eleanor was suggesting, how it'll work on this project. But then at the end, you have to request a, um, sign off from the HDC that says, yes, your building was built in compliance with the, uh, COA and the drawings of record.
And we're not grant, we're not, they've asked a waiver for that, but we're not granting that.
We don't want to grant that.
Yeah, the only part we're granting is that they don't have to go to the HDC. They still have to come to us. But this, this condition is not quite worded properly. It needs to talk about the completed structures. The applicant shall...
Submit a request?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure this is right. Shall, submit a request to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review, review and approval whether the construct, the built structures conform with the plans and requirements of the board's conditions concerning exterior architectural features and design. Again, I'm not...
To review and confirm maybe? That the built structures?
Yeah, sure.
Built structures meet the requirements of the board's conditions. Confirmation.
Do you want to reread that?
Sure, let me just try. The applicant shall submit a request to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review and confirmation that the built structures meet the requirements of the board's conditions concerning exterior architectural features and design.
I mean, I, I don't, I, that sounds okay to me. Still a little vague, but, you know, if we had... Well, we do have plans. They have notes on them, they're clear to me. I think they're clear to anybody who is in the business.
Aren't we going to get architectural plans to approve before they can start?
Yes.
And then we're going to confirm that they meet the requirements of our markups?
First, yeah. So this, this is only to confirm that they built what they said they were going to build. And everybody else has to do this. It's not a unreasonable request at all. So George, are you comfortable with that change?
I'm comfortable with it, I just didn't hear half of it, and
All right, Lisa...
we're at the point where I'm going to really need, and as simply a time issue, I'm going to need
Do you want to type this in the send it form?
Um, you know...
All right, Eleanor's going to...
Charged assistance with getting, people getting me proposed insertions to this, because I'm not going to be able to, I'm, I'm not going to be able to word this stuff in the concept.
Okay, got it. Lisa is going to give it to Eleanor, who's going to send it to you in a moment, right?
Yes. I'll write it a little later. Or do you want me to just come over here?
Just take a minute.
Oh. Uh, the applicant shall submit a, a request to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review and confirmation that the built structures meet
To, I'm sorry, to review?
And, uh, for review and confirmation.
For review and confirmation, okay.
That the built structures meet the requirements of the board's conditions concerning exterior architectural features and design.
Exterior...
Architectural features and design.
Okay, I'll read it down to you. The applicant shall submit a request to the HCC administrator as the board's designee for review and confirmation that the built structures meet the requirement of the board's conditions as to exterior architectural features and design.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so it sounds good to me. George, you'll get that in a moment.
Okay. And George, I'm going to send you my stuff after, we'll learn now or after the call. Yeah, and were you going to, were you going to synthesize Susan's comments or no? You know, her, the thing about the other permits and... Other permits? I, I don't know. I, I'm... I'm going to, I'm going to do the Saichem's path rail and the, um, voting requirements. Great. And I'm going to do the interior finishes. I think those are the items I said I would do. Good.
That's fine.
Does that cover your issues, Susan, or no? In addition to what Ed had, Ed, Ed, Tool had added?
No, I think, I think that, I think that covers them.
Good, all right.
All right, so back to the waivers for a moment. Okay, I'm going to let Susan read a note. She has, about this specific waiver.
So the waiver for Section 139, Section, or 13928, the occupancy permits, where they're asking to waive the requirement for the, for certificate from HDC. I think their waiver is, um, request is, um, not clear. So I think we should say denied. Applicant is required to obtain written certification by ZBA acting as HDC. So I think that gives them what they want, right? They don't want to go to the HDC, but it also retains what we want, which is they're an HDC sign off on the, um, certificate of occupancy.
Well, it doesn't really, because it, it's still...
Well, the way it's written, it...
You're not, you're not making them get a cer, the certification is the certificate of appropriateness, I thought.
No, that's, that's in the...
No, no. That's the one above.
Oh, I got you.
So, so this, yeah, this is just at the...
I've got you, yeah.
Yeah, so at the, at the end. Because I think if we...
No, actually, the way I worded this was not my understanding of what you told me, so...
Okay.
Okay.
So Susan, you said denied, period, and then, um...
Denied, applicant is required to obtain written certification or whatever, written certification by ZBA as HDC, and that's for their occupancy permit.
Yep.
Again, I think it's okay when it says granted in part, because we've granted them the, uh, the waiver to go to the HDC itself. They're going to us. They're coming back to us to prove that they have built the building. We have simply just designated the HDC. I think the problem is it talks about approval of final plans. It's not the final plans. That would be in, uh, but again, I don't, I don't want to beat the horse anymore. I want to move on, so...
All right, let's move on.
Well, let, let's finish. So we're either going to go with yours, or we're going to just change the wording so it, it's more consistent with what Lisa just sent in.
I think what I said is consistent with what Lisa sent in.
Okay, then dictate it to, please.
I mean, I don't know, I'm one person. You guys disagree?
Does anybody have a strong feeling on that one?
Can't you, can't you say granted in part, but applicant is required to obtain written certification by ZBA as HDC?
Yeah, or it's by ZBA, or it's designee.
What part are you granting?
I don't know.
You're granting that they don't have to go to the HDC.
But that's what we're, we're saying that.
That's covered in 13926.
That's, that's up here, but I'm thinking if we...
That's only for, they don't have to go to the HDC. The normal, I don't care.
I just say, I just say if we say granted in part, it, what part are we granting? Because it's not, I don't think it's clear.
That's fine.
I mean, the HDC should be treated the same way we're, we are with the Water Commission and DPW. We designate them.
So how do you want it to be worded, Jim? What is your vote on this?
All right, how about, how about, uh, uh...
The way you said.
Granted in part, comma, as to HDC, comma, but denied, uh, um, a required...
I think we're saying more than we have to...
Denied as to required certificate from board through, now, now I got off twisted.
I think we're saying more than we have to.
I know what you're trying to say. It, it is not, it's not as it's worded on there. I know what you're saying is that you're just not making them get it from the HDC, but you're still requiring that certification.
Correct.
Right, I just don't want to, I just am looking at it from the, the other side. Like, I don't want to give them wiggle room that then they're like, well, you said granted in part, and that's talking about the certificate of occupancy, so we don't have to get signed off for the certificate of occupancy. I think if we just say, here's what we're requiring, then, then that, that question goes away.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Did you, did you have something you can read to me, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
I, I, well, I had said denied instead of saying granted in part, but denied applicant is required to obtain written certification by ZBA acting as HDC.
Good.
Okay. I, uh, I had a couple other things on the waivers on page two, 13919B1DND. It talks about denying, uh, which I have no problem with. Well, it's the waiver requirement is applicable to condominium lot for a 10-foot wide planting strip with at least one tree per parking space in parking lot with 20 or more spaces. Denied, fine. Further, no parking areas of 20 cars or more on one lot are permitted in the comprehensive permit decision. Um, you, some of the other areas are one big lot, like the road is one big lot. So there will be 20 additional spaces on the roadway. So the way I'm reading this, the applicant would have a hard time meeting our needs or our desire to have one additional space per dwell, per, per unit. For overflow. So I think that, all I'm saying is I think that should be stricken. We've just denied it.
Where are you now?
Page two of the waivers.
Top box. Or you could exclude roadways.
Yeah, or you could exclude...
We're going backwards to page two, okay? All right, I didn't know we were going backwards, so denied. Parking spaces of 20 cars or more require 10-foot planting strip buffer.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, but, and it says denied, which is fine. I think we're all in agreement with that, right? If you had a parking lot, you have to screen it. But it goes on to say, George, further, no parking areas of 20 cars or more on one lot are permitted in the comprehensive permit decision. The roadway is a lot.
Got you, good. All right, denied, period.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, does anybody have anything on page three of the waivers? Four. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Okay. I do have something on eight. On 4.18, sidewalks. Um, they ask to waive, specifies sidewalks installed both sides of roadway. Waive the requirement. Well, by, by, by this language where we just say granted, it seems to me they don't have to put any sidewalks in. The, I, I believe that the-
We requested one.
You know, it should be put in there that they're requesting to, the waiver request is to install sidewalks on one side of the roadway, which is in their submission to us, so we're not making this up.
So should it say granted in part sidewalks to be installed on one side of the roadway?
Well, what I'm saying is they're not asking to waive the requirement. They're asking to waive, so I, well, I guess they are.
Yeah, because they, they're waiving installing them on both sides of the roadway.
Right, all right, so yeah.
I, I think this implies that they're going to do a sidewalk on one side.
What does?
Where it says waiver requested in that column, a third column?
Yeah, but you're looking at an old one, Ed. You're, you're looking at, you're looking at an old one. I agree with you. It says it in there.
Oh, sorry.
Just needs to be specified, that they have to put a sidewalk on.
So let's specify it. Let's stop arguing over it. So specify sidewalks installed both sides of roadway. Granted, but noted that sidewalks shall be on one side as proposed, or something like that. You want that?
Yes.
It's shown on the pla- it, it- Granted as to both sides of the roadway, but- But sidewalks must be included on one side as shown in plan.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan. Okay, so we're good there?
Not yet. Let's try to finish as, as much as I can with you on the phone. Granted as to, granted as to both sides, sides of the roadway. Now, I, let me try it. Good. Granted, sidewalks not required on both sides. However, sidewalk must be included on one side as shown on plan.
That seems fairly clear to me. Are we good, are we good on that? So then you get to 419 on page nine. "Waive provision of bicycle paths. Sidewalks on both sides of the road are proposed." Well, as we just discussed in 418, they're not proposed on both sides of the road. So it should be the waiver requested for, is for bike paths as sidewalks proposed, as sidewalks are proposed on one side of roadway.
Wait, how can sidewalks on both sides of the road be proposed if they want the not, if they want the waiver? I'm, now I'm confused.
Well, because this, this, first of all, I'm looking at their old, well, it's, because it was taken from the old. It was not taken by, from the, that language was taken from the 156-unit waiver list. The waiver list under, the waiver requested under the 100-unit and 92-unit is quote-unquote, "Waiver requested for bicycle paths as sidewalks proposed on one side of roadway." It's just whoever took, it's just a language thing. It's just, they got the wrong sentence in there.
Their, their last waiver chart does say 100-unit and 92-unit waiver requested to install sidewalks on one side of roadway.
Can you send that to George?
That was even-
Yeah, when I deleted the 100-unit, we must have left some language in or something. So it's 4.19, bicycle paths. Bicycle paths shall be required. "Waive provision of bicy- bicycle paths, comma, as sidewalks proposed on both sides." No.
No.
"Waive provision of bicycle paths, comma, as sidewalks proposed..." What does it say? What is it?
As sidewalks propose one side of roadway. Let me take a picture of it and send it to you.
So are we granting it?
Yeah, they don't have to put in a bike path in, inside the, yes, we're granting it.
Right, because of, because we're having to crosswalks.
I mean, I don't even know why they put in language about the sidewalk. You just could eliminate that.
Right.
Okay, on 4.24, driveway aprons. Again, this is going back in the day. "Waive driveway apron width to nine."
I think they eliminated that.
They eliminated that a long time ago. The waiver would not be required according to their list. Minimum 10-foot driveway apron would be provided, so either it's inapplicable or just strike it.
Strike that whole box.
You could also strike the, the bridge one because again, their, their list is waiver would not be requested. No bridges.
Good.
Are we concerned that we're working off of two different lists?
No, I mean, yes, but, um, this just was taken by, you know, wasn't done proper. I think we're working under one list. It's, it's this comma.
What was that comma?
Susan wanted to know if we should be-
I'm just concerned, I'm, I'm having aversion control concern because it seems like there, maybe somebody can go through the, someone in your office can go through and just eyeball the list that had the 92 and the 100 versus this final one to make sure that we're, we've got everything?
Yeah, they did. Obviously, it didn't work because they, they, they left it.
Well, I just did it.
There were a couple that just got left, but-
All right, so Ed just did it.
I'm working for KP Law now, so let's, let's keep moving.
The important thing is, um, I think it, I think this covers everything. It, uh, and where, you know, to the extent a waiver isn't specifically granted, it's denied, so. I think we're covered either way, but yeah, we can, I can do a final proofread of this final document. With the edits.
I mean, we can go through it each one if we want, which is fine. Um, just to make sure that it's, we're working on the correct list.
I don't, I mean, I don't have it. You have it.
I have it all. I, I did it. I mean, I, I'm not saying I got everything right, but I did look at it and, uh, you know, many of them state that we grant, for instance, board and water sewer. We grant it in part only as specified, as specified by the conditions of the comprehensive permit. So it's more explicit in the comprehensive permit decision. So I'm good with it.
Okay.
But I will give you these if you want to look at it tonight.
Uh, I have it, I have it at home. I just-
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say about the waivers? Do we want to go over them each one again? No? All right, well, then I, I think, Ed and George, are you okay to the extent that those modi, the modifications that we just talked about are going to get into the recorded version?
I am. I, in terms of what I need to do?
George?
I missed, I missed your question. I, I'm not, I didn't follow that question.
The, the question is-
That Eleanor is sending to me while you're-
All right, the question is simply, we've, we've made some edits. We've made a few changes, some additions, some subtractions. Are we comfortable they're going to get into the, the permit by tomorrow? Let's, when, when do you have to put it in? By noon?
They, we'll take it up till 3:30.
Let's say by noon, or tonight. And, you know, it didn't sound, I don't think there were a lot of changes, but there were some, and some were import, all of them were important, so.
Yep.
Can we be confident that that's going to take place?
We'll, we'll get a redlined copy so we can compare with our notes that we've been taking today. That's a question.
I know.
I'm serious.
Was it for me?
No, it's for George.
George, you hear that? Question? George?
Um, um, yeah.
Okay, because that'll, I mean, that'll make it easy to just-
I heard the question. I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the answer to it.
Well, if you, if you, if you do a final clean copy, you can do a redline by that.
It has to be, yeah, you'd have to have them all before you accept them anyway, so yeah, sure.
Okay, and then I just have one more area I just, I'd like to touch on. Um, and this question I think might be more for you, Ed Marchand. Um, so in the Satchem's Path and Rugged Scott, we spent a lot of page space in the decisions talking about the Homeowners Association. We had talked about it on our, at our meeting on the 7th, and I had highlighted a bunch of language in the decisions and sent to George, but are they, are we not really able to focus on the, on that? We, we provided a lot of detail in those two decisions, but because we don't have any governance drafts or documents, is that why we're not including it in this decision?
Specifically, Susan, which, um, which conditions were you talking about in Satchem's Path?
So, let me just get to that one. And so in Satchem's Path, sorry, it takes a second once it loads. Okay, so let's see, that's a split little fence. Um, so like, condition 18, where it talks about subdivision management, and then it talks about the Homeowners Association, and then it goes on to, um, condition 19 or subsection 19, and it says, "The following conditions, rules, and regulations shall be binding upon the owners, occupants, and the association under the authority of the associate, association, its agents, designees, and assigns." And then, you know, there's A through M of, um-
I will, I, I'm familiar with those, and I wasn't sure given the-
I just didn't know, is it premature?
Status of the information we have, but I'd be happy to review those.
Okay.
And make recommendations as to whether or not we should add some of those.
And I think Rugged Scott had, I had highlighted as well, had similar ones. I just, again, I just don't know if it's premature for us to address those, but because we did provide structure and guidance in the past two decisions, I, I would think we would want to do that again here, even if it is at a limited level because we don't have documents in front of us.
I'll review those.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can you give me a few examples of A through M? Like, what are we talking about?
Uh, hold on, I was just going to email this to you right this second.
Oh, okay, that's fine, too.
But here, um, I just got out of it, so I can do that. I mean, some of it we may have covered, but it just seems, I just looked through and I don't see really anything. Sorry, this one document has all three permit, so. Um, so like, the first one just generally talks about what the Homeowners Association shall be established by the applicant for the maintenance of all common areas, including roadways, drainage facilities, swales, sidewalks, mailboxes, et cetera. Association shall be governed by the Declaration of Protective Covenants submitted to the Board of Appeals, which we didn't get, um, anything like that. But the association may be legally created, accept deeds to the roads and common facilities, undertake other administrative and organizational activities or actions, but shall not assume road infrastructure maintenance or open space and mailbox, oh, until at the end of all the infrastructures completed. Um, and then it talks about how, except that upon completion of the sale of the first 16 homes, and that was 51%, right, of Satchem's, then the Homeowners Association becomes responsible for costs and maintenance. Um, and this is, in this paragraph, it talks about the 250 per lot, which we're proposing 400. So then A through M is, um-
Forgot it.
Whatever, it just, it just goes on to-
Ed, you're going to look at that?
Let me just say, I had looked at that, and I don't know if we had any discussion. For example, this gets into detail in terms of how many persons per bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, what the rental policy is, and I didn't think we, I, I didn't feel comfortable including that level of detail without input from the Board. And I'm not sure we've placed any restrictions on, the affordable units cannot be rented. That's clear in the deed rider. But I don't think we have imposed any kind of rental restrictions on the market rate units.
We didn't, and, and we did not ever discuss it. So do we want to discuss it now, or are we okay with them being rented?
What?
The market rate.
The market rate units. I mean, I don't think, the only one that we've ever restricted, I believe, is the, uh, is Satchem's Path because they're all affordable.
They're all affordable.
Yeah.
And by, by the deed rider, they can't be rented, so. I, I'm not looking to restrict them at this, this junct point. So I would strike the, the, anything about, are we okay, or does that, do you want to have a restriction? No?
No, I thought, I thought the only restriction on rentals was provided by the applicant where they were talking about when they were doing the year-round restriction limiting to 30 days or something.
Yeah.
But that wasn't, that wasn't us.
Well, do you, I mean, again, to Ed's point, we didn't, we didn't go into great detail about the-
Yeah, I don't think this talks about, I don't-
No, not just about the rental, but sort of about, about HOA governance issues. We can, we're, the deliberations are still open, so we can go over it. If we want it included, we should talk about it.
I mean, I think it's a major issue in terms of impact on market value, on restrictions of the rentals. And I thought we were taking, as Susan said, the only discussion on limitations on rental came about as we discussed the year-round residences. And then that policy was, I think, no rental walkers in 30, I'm sorry. Minimal rental period would be 30 days, but then they submit a revised proposal, and we're not giving any deference to that year-round residence plan.
No.
And I don't think we ever discussed restrictions on market rate units.
No.
No, I think we're off that subject.
Yeah.
I think we're, we've moved beyond that subject. So are there other HOA things we would like included there? And we talked about the, uh, the seed money, if you will. I do think that there should be a little language in there, and I know you sent it, and, um, but let's-
I mean, one of the, one of the things-
Is that they, they're required to submit the proposed Homeowners Association and/or, and it's going to be and, the condominium trust document.
To us for review and approval, correct?
For review and approval.
So we're-
And that's not unusual, because you have to be sure that those documents reference the comprehensive- the comprehensive permit and the regulatory agreement, and they're consistent with the conditions in the comprehensive permit.
So having said that, do you think we're adequately protected in that we're going to get a view of them?
I'm gonna expand and make sure that language I just mentioned, just recited, is in there. And I don't think, you know, it's not that we didn't ask for these, I was asking for these, you know, from the very early meeting. I don't think they quite have figured out yet how they're gonna, what the governance is gonna be, and how they're gonna structure it. And normally, it's not unusual that you don't get these at this stage. Very often, it's a condition, and I think what I said when I wrote this up is that, at the, we need to see these at, it's part of the building permit application for submission requirement. Because it doesn't do you any good to get it sort of later. And they're gonna need, they're gonna need to do these documents, they're not gonna be able to sell units until they can offer these documents to buyers.
Alright, so I, I agree with Ed that we're gonna look, see them later. I do think that the, some of the language can get in there about the voting rights. So you can't gang up on, one group can't gang up on the other.
Right, I'm gonna plug that in.
Seeding the HOA at $400 a lot. Were there any other specific?
I was just gonna get Rugged Scott, because that's not a 100% affordable.
We're not talking about restricting the rentals. Anything else?
Ed, if you're looking, maybe look at the Rugged Scott management issues, section 3, that starts on page 10.
Okay. Now, I'll go through that too, Susan. I'll get that in front of me here.
I mean, that one's probably more relevant, because it's a, it's a mixed fair market value and affordable.
I mean, I'm looking at the same thing. It's only two paragraphs. To page, management issues.
3.1, right, and 3.2.
Oh, you're saying these are all, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this one, because this one goes into like, I mean, I think we talked about it this, at some point.
No, these aren't, yeah, this isn't, well, this is a management issue, but those are the conditions. I think it, I don't think we need to go into, I-
Okay. We'll just, we'll just have to look at it on the other side.
I mean, it's literally two, two paragraphs. "Homeowners Association shall be established by the applicant for maintenance of all common areas, et cetera, et cetera. The association shall be governed by the bylaws, submitted to the HCC for review and approval as required pursuant to 4.1." You know, I think this language is, is fine. With the-
And I added, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanna find what I plugged in. I said that George, and George plucked it in. George, can you find that, the language Ed said, homeowners?
Yeah, that, that was from before?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it was good. It was like, went on and on.
So maybe I'm, I, am I missing that?
Oh yeah, it's, uh, the 100? Okay. Page 32?
100 is on page 28.
On page 32.
28, 28, 28. Page 28.
28. Yeah, paragraph 100, Ed.
Okay, let me, let me just read that to everybody.
No, we have it in front of us. We have it.
We have it in front of them.
We have it.
Good. Page 100.
Yeah, this, this- Then I would just add a couple of sub, either paragraphs or others about the voting rights. Can't gang up. And seating of the-
And the seating. And I think I, I think that'll cover it.
So Ed Tool, why don't you just do that, and you can send that to me?
Ed Marshant, I'll do that.
Oh, you will? Okay, great.
Ed Tool, let's just be clear here. Ah, here, is volunteer who doesn't go home from these meetings. Never mind. But let's, let's just- Okay.
No, I didn't mean to put unfair burden on you. I just, I'm just worried about the timing.
Well, I'm worried about the timing too, George, frankly. So, let's, yeah, that's an issue. But I don't think that means that I'm, I'm typing away with these conditions. I'm sorry.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so, are you, are we satisfied on the HOA issue? With Condition 100 plus a couple of other additions? Yeah? No?
I mean, I guess. Yeah.
I am. I mean, of all the things that are post-comprehensive permit, I'm less concerned about this. I don't see really how this could go awry with, you know, we're pretty clear about the apportionment, which would probably be the biggest deal.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, I've come down on this the whole time, that the the homeowners should be able to figure a lot of this out themselves, but so based on that, I'm okay with this language.
Well, not only that, but the developer, it's only in his best interest to have a good-
Exactly.
Plan. If the plan is, you know, is horrible, why would I wanna buy in there?
Yeah, there's no, no reason why the developer would structure something that is out of the ordinary.
And we get to review it.
Right.
Okay? Does anybody else have anything else they wanna do? I'm not, I'm not trying to cut off this discussion, I just I, we, you know, it's near impossible to get- No, never mind. So, does anybody else have anything else? No? Lisa? You good?
I'm good.
Susan? For now? You keep looking.
I'm good.
Alright. So, having said that, in recognition of the fact that there were multiple deliberation sessions with all sorts of, I think, positive and constructive dialogue, and the fact that Kira missed some of those meetings due to scheduling issues, it was my intention to designate the voting members as Jim, Jeff, Susan, Lisa, and myself. Everybody okay with that? Yes. Take that as a yes. So if somebody wouldn't mind making a motion, I can make the motion, and so I'll make, I'm gonna move to approve the comprehensive permit application with conditions as stated in the draft decision provided by council dated June 13th, 2019, and that the chair is authorized to work with council to finalize the signed written decision in a final form suitable for filing with the town clerk, with any final revisions consistent with the board's discussions during final deliberations on the application on June 13th, 2019. There it is. Does somebody like to second that?
I can second it.
Okay. Lisa seconded it. So again, we're voting on what we have in front of us, and with-
With the changes that we talked about.
With the changes that we've already talked about, I don't anticipate doing anything other than making sure those changes got in there. So any further discussion? No? So all, I think we should probably do this as a roll call vote. So I'll just start down at the end of the table. Jim?
Nay.
Nay. Jeff?
Aye, aye.
I'll go to myself. Edward?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, so as far as I'm concerned, that matter is over. So we will sign today with the intention of again, I will read it tomorrow. So-
I am going to, I, as Susan has noted, I'm when we get, when I put everything in, everything discussed, including all the work that Ed is helping with, Ed Marshant, I'm going to I'll send back to Eleanor a you know, a redline, a track change version of what would be, then be accepted into the final that you would attach to the signature page. So everybody on the board that voted will have a chance to read it, you know, before you go ahead and file it with the town clerk.
Right, so we're only signing, if you will, because we're all in the room now, but I think it make, does it make sense that everybody give positive affirmation that they have read it and are good with it? Yes?
I wanna look at it.
Okay, so all I can say is you would hold the signature page in abeyance until we get back to you.
Maggie is here for the sole purpose of memorizing. And I gotta plan to catch an hour, so please sign fast.
Well, let's, I would like to discuss the procedure of signing. Okay, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Alright, so you're gonna notarize one page, as I understand it. Do you have to ask us anything? Like, are we signing this of our free will or any of that stuff, or is that, no? Okay, so-
Notarizing that you are in fact who you say you are, and that makes the general.
Well, the notary has a thing about identifying. Make, please make sure you read that notary form, that's not my form. So if you need to show a license or something, she needs to indicate on there.
Personal knowledge.
The form you sent me says, prove to me through satisfactory evidence of identification, which was space, to be the person whose name's blah, blah, blah. So people are gonna have to show your license or something to the-
We're told that we don't, that that personal knowledge is acceptable, but-
But that's not what you wrote on the form.
Okay, here, here's-
I have my license with me.
Does everybody have their license?
Yes.
That's fine, it's fine.
When your identity is known, the notary doesn't have to look at your license, but your form that you provided me does not say that.
Okay, we're gonna show our licenses.
I can rewrite it, or you can do it, you know, the right way.
Susan, do you have a license? Yeah, we're all good. We all have our license.
I'll take a look at all.
Please. You can just put a pose, just, I think it's, I think it makes sense to sign it.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna tell you about another revision that will be made on the final. It's on the page preceding that. It talks about a unanimous decision, so we'll indicate that it was a four to one vote.
Perfect. This is what you get.
Huh?
Jeff? This is what you get.
This is what I got.
It's all I got. Alright.
Blame it on you.
You have the motion, go?
Blame it on you.
I'm being responsible for that.
I'm holding you responsible.
I take full responsibility. I'll give that one to Eleanor. Okay. Just to be clear, I am not available tomorrow afternoon. So please, get this back to me. Or all of us, for that matter, because we're all gonna reread it. So Ed? Thank you. Alright? I think so. I think, I think we are finished with you guys, Ed and George, correct? I'm gonna take that as a yes. Is anybody on the line? Houston?
I added on mute, sorry, Ed, yeah. Right, okay.
Alright, I think we're good. The paperwork's been handed in. We're moving on. Oh, yeah, I gotta take-
Okay, I'll get to work on my stuff. Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you, Ed.
Okay, bye.
The headlights canceled too. Supposed to come a little bit up. What else?
I don't even think we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have horror issues, but maybe our rugged Scott is continuing. Okay. There are only four people for this. Did Jeff leave? No, he stopped here. Jim's outside, why don't you grab him while these, there's a couple of paperwork things we can-
Yeah, I think Jeff is taking a little longer.
We can get some things out of the way.
Rugged Scott continued, I don't see that anywhere.
Yeah, they, they let me know that.
Okay, are you ready?
Well, we'll wait for, now, we're waiting for-
So, we have to do the request?
Is Jim sitting out there?
No, I'm not. Yes, I'm not, we share, like, everyone does, but-
I'm so sleepy.
All right. I think we've got one, two, we have five, let's move on, we'll wait till everybody's come, comes back, so. All right, we're gonna move on, Terry, you're good to go, right? We'll wait. Let's go without Eleanor, we don't need, 5103, Rugged Scott LLC, the applicant has asked to extend, well, has given permission to extend the period for us to make a determination, correct? And I think that Eleanor's got the extension, so. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
No. So, we show, I guess we should take a vote on that, except-
Yeah, you have to accept the extension.
Accept the extension, so, somebody make a motion to accept the extension?
Still moved.
Thank you. Somebody wanna second that?
I'll second.
Hold on, any further discussion? Did anybody in the audience want to speak about that one?
5103?
Yeah. No. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, unfortunately, there may be a problem with the next one, but we will see. 2318, Adam Ross, Emma Ross, 50 Okawa, for the applicant, Mr. Bodett, but Mr. Omara is not here.
But, but-
But Mark and Jeff-
Jeff are at the table.
So, Jeff can take it.
Okay. My bad. Let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Rick Bodett, actually, applicants, applicants, Adam and Emma Ross, property is 50 Okawa Avenue. Do, do you guys all want?
Brief refresh, yeah.
As brief as I can. So, this, this property has the, I guess, benefit of a variance from about 10 years ago, or, sorry, eight years ago, that was applied for by the planning department on behalf of the town in Nantucket, when the town in Nantucket owned the property, it was due to a merger, they needed a variance in order to sell the property to my client. This board granted the variance with a specific condition that a certain part of the property that you'll see on the site plan and provided is not allowed to be built upon, no structures. At the time of the variance, the property was in a luxury zoning district. The property was then sold to my client, and in addition, you might remember that the town placed a D restriction on the property, very similar to the restricted area, so it was allowed to be built in that rear area of the property. Fast forward to 2017, town meeting, the zoning changed to a lot one, my client had built their house, it is outside the restricted area, obviously, but now they are allowed to have additional ground cover, and we came to you asking to rescind the variance, since it's no longer required. Specifically, they wanted the condition gone that they allowed them to build the garage in that area of property, their driveway. You also might remember that there was opposition, the neighbors were opposed to what we were requesting. This board asked us to go to the select board to ask their permission to release the restriction first, we applied for that in November, we were just heard in May, and the select board granted the release of that restriction, and imposed a new restriction, which I think you have, which limits the restricted area, didn't eliminate the restricted area, just limits it to allow us to build a lot. The other important note, of course, is that between our last meeting with you, and now, we met, and with the neighbors, they, my clients and the neighbors individually met as well a number of times, we've signed an agreement with them, providing them with a specific restriction on our property to enforce, which they have elected now.
Which is basically Exhibit A.
I don't know what-
Well, that's not the agreement, but that's-
Oh, no, 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 but that's, this is the plan we're looking at, the new plan.
Yeah, that's a new plan, yeah. So, I can give you the agreement that we gave, that we signed with them.
That'd be good.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right one.
Well, I have some good plans to look at, but anyway, the general, uh, is that we're allowed to build a garage, we'll plant wheelings, we'll build a berm, correct the wheelings on behind the garage, so it's screaming on both sides of the garage, the garage can only be a certain size, has to be a certain area, it's, we're not allowed to, you know, make a dwelling, have business in it, comfortably, or kind of store vehicles.
It's pretty big, not that it matters. He's not using it as a shop.
Not a shop, not allowed, under the restriction that we are, if we go approved here, it will put on record benefiting the neighbor.
I have to ask, why didn't you give us this agreement before?
What do you mean, before when?
Tonight, today. Just so we could actually read it.
We have the one from the town.
This is not how we do things here, we don't actually produce documents so we can read before we sign them, we sign them and then we read them after.
It seems to be a pattern.
But we have the one with the town.
Yeah, I don't know, it wasn't intentional, Ed, I mean, there's nothing sinister going on here.
No, I'm not saying it's sinister, but I mean, we're just, we're sort of-
Having to take my word for it? Is that what you're about to say?
Trying to believe that I would have a-
You can have that, you can have that.
I mean, and the one I have is not signed by the Rosses, but, oh, they're signed, different signature page, got it.
Counterpart signature pages, we call it.
Got ya.
And that's why they granted our request as well. So, that, that agreement has attached to it a restriction that we've, that their attorney and I have worked out, and that'll go on record if we, if we're successful. I think that's about it, so we're, just to refresh your memory, we're asking for a rescission of the variance.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you went to the Fana family and dealt with all that, and, great, no problems for me.
And so, I'm sorry, you, so you have this restriction with the town, but then you're also, part of this agreement is to record a separate restriction that goes between you and the neighbor?
Yeah, we've already looked at the terms of it, just anything signed will go on record.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
I think this is what we asked for, right? We asked to go to town, the town's put a new restriction on, and, um-
And they've negotiated with the neighbors?
No.
So, just to be clear, you're, we're, you want us to get rid of the variance, but at the same time, the restriction is in place, the new restriction.
So, the new restriction from running to the town-
Right.
Is in place on our record at the registry.
With the, with the-
With the cutout.
Right.
So, that really only benefits us.
Right.
And then, the agreement states and has attached the restriction running in favor of the news, and that will be recorded, if you find it in your hearts to get this information.
After the beginning of the meeting, it may not. Okay, because without, without the rescission of the variance, even the new restriction doesn't really help you out. Got ya. Okay. Just wanna be clear, and the restriction is, this is what you can build, and that's what was agreed on.
Exactly.
Well, I, I will take, I skimmed it, obviously, if we take a vote and, you know, I gotta, I gotta reiterate it, next time, please, give us some material, Ed, because it's, it's a little, it's not that I don't believe you at all, it's just, you know, we're required to make decisions based on info, if we don't have it, it's tough. But it is signed by both of them, I looked at it briefly.
Uh, just one question on these, this enforcement of restrictions, is it the intention of the parties that the McKay's can enforce the restrictions along with their successors that are signed, or is it just individual?
Uh, no, they, it runs with the title, and if they can enforce it, or to the extent they sell it, that person can enforce it.
Okay.
For the maximum period allowed under the law.
You're right.
How do we feel about it? Jeff, you've already stated you're okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with the, the rec, the pla, is it, was it a formal planning board recommendation? That you have in your staff report, or is it just?
I can't remember, 30 years, this has been announced.
Oh, so that, yeah, it's not updated, right?
No, it was in the update, so I just didn't know if it was new information, or-
Yeah, every time I, that's from one of the initial staff-
Second time we came.
Five years, yeah.
Can I make a motion to?
Do you want to vote for me?
Does anybody in the audience want to talk about this? Come on. Don't be shy. No, okay. Go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rescindence of the variance, to grant the rescindence?
Recision?
Recision, sorry.
I'll second that.
So, we're gonna vacate and rescind the prior variance. Okay. Conditions on, if you will, on the fact that all of this-
Right.
Yes.
Is reported.
Recorded, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, I would assume that would be sort of done simultaneously?
Yeah, I mean, we'll put the decision-
Or that, or that this becomes part of the decision?
I don't, it can if you wanted to, in front of me, I mean-
The report is like, we can be an exhibit.
Do you guys, do you issue a decision or a decision?
Yep. Yeah, it has to get to me, I don't know if you, you thought it was.
I guess so.
So that they're aware.
So, I don't care what you attach to it, man.
So, why don't we attach that, just so that works?
Why don't we do that? I think it makes sense.
That's why it's clear.
Yeah.
So, attach the recorded agreement.
Okay. Anything else? No? So, the motions have been made and seconded, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody in the audience. Well, we'll go, Karen didn't speak up, so the five of us. Okay?
Thanks.
All right. 619, Victor Haley, 94 orange.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bill Ryan, I'm calling, uh, and last, we recommended that we just get out and set back out together, we're slowly done, so we're no longer seeking any relief except for rescission, keep the thing going, of the prior leave for the commercial guest house in the residential district, going to that, and make it a residential program.
Okay.
So, this will be a partial withdrawal of special permit requested, which I will file with the town clerk, you don't have to do anything, so at least we voted.
We need to vote sort of two on both?
To approve the partial withdrawal, the, the request for special permit?
Mm-hmm.
And then you go to approve or, the rescission of previous relief.
Okay, so, can I, does anybody in the audience want to talk about this one? Um, so, can I get a motion to, for a partial rescission? No, a partial withdrawal.
Withdrawal of the-
Of the request?
Right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? So, Karen's voting now, Jim, you're not voting. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so on the second point, the conversion, or the- Rescission of-
The commercial use.
Yeah, the commercial use. How does everyone feel about that?
Fine.
Fine.
More guest houses?
Sure.
Are we all good with it? All right, same people voting, who wants to-
Make a motion, I'm sorry?
No one yet, who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Karen makes the motion. Grant that ruling, or grant the rescission.
I'll second this one, too.
Susan seconds it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine nineteen, Andre Recoter and Isabel Shiavi. Twenty-two Basset Road, for the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant, Attorney John Brescher, representing Andre's Recoter and Ms. Isabel Shiavi. I believe Mr. Glynn was here last month to present, as I was under the weather. And I'd be happy to do a very quick synopsis of where we are. With this project, the long and short of it is that they received a special permit back in two thousand and four to actually validate the original ground cover and need it around. And they, let's see, they, they filed for a building permit, interestingly, in two thousand and six. And I believe the issue that we ran to last time is that they applied to the zoning board appeals at time from extension permit. And that extension permit was denied. The question was, the question the board asked was, why, why was it? To call why it was denied. And the justification that he remembered in talking with Marcus was that for, look, you had two years to activate this permit, you haven't done so yet, why, why not? So he had a conversation with Marcus back in two thousand and six. We have the documents reporting the, this letter and understanding. Marcus said, look, you have until August of two thousand and six to apply for your building permit. And then you would have, then the special permit from two thousand and four would have been activated. So, they did so. That, that was it. They, the original reason for the special permit that was denied, with the extension request that was denied, was that they still weren't entirely sure of their plans. And they were going, oh, we can have another year to think about it, and Marcus and the board said, no. Marcus said, look, you have, you have until August. And so they said, okay, fine, let's, let's apply for the building permit, building permit was issued. And over the course of literally...
That's this one, from November?
That would be the one.
Yeah.
Literally, over the course of the last, what's called twelve years, they had to construct the house. As it turns out, they, they have gone back to HGC a number of times. And the end, at the end of the day, the end result is that they are asking for less ground cover than what was originally allowed in the two thousand and four special permit. When they went to Marcus to amend their building permit for this, say, our ground, our ground cover is actually going to lessen. He said, no, you need, you need some sort of relief for this. We originally thought, well, maybe because we're actually lessening the non-conformity of what was allowed under the special permit, we can do so via zoning administrator relief, and concluded, no, that doesn't work. So, we're here to amend the special permit from two thousand and four to allow for a total ground coverage property. Let me see if I can get mine to me right here. Oh, for me? Um, six thousand two hundred and seven, when the special permit allowed for six thousand four hundred and sixty-four. And so that, at the end of the day, that's...
Do you have a copy of the permit you submitted to amend the building permit? Is it in here?
I don't, I don't think that, that we got that far, because Marcus denied. Marcus denied, and said, no, no, you have to...
No, no, copy of the application.
The application, I'm not sure I have that application. I think he flagged the, um, work without being done, because there was some shaming, and he said, hey, you're doing, you're doing the work without a permit. Anything change you want to make, you have to go to the board.
So all these amendments that we have in the file are all from two thousand and six?
There's a lot of stuff from two thousand and six.
Yeah, there's nothing more recent.
But this, am I reading this?
Yep.
I think, maybe I misheard you. This Bracken Plan, that's three twenty-seven nineteen
Yes.
says existing was six two oh seven, and proposed is six four six four.
Oh. I apologize.
Is that right?
No, you, you are, you are correct. The, these, all these numbers, frankly, I apologize, have confused me more.
I'm just on two oh five.
You are, you are correct. The six four, I call it a six five three, six five three nine is what was allowed.
Okay.
Six four six four.
Is what's happened now, okay, good.
Their existing is six two oh.
Right. Okay.
And it's, and it's Marcus's position, you need to get some sort of relief?
That's right, in order to lessen the, the ground cover, yeah, we were...
So the permit's still in play?
Correct.
But now it's less ground cover, so we need to, like, amend that special permit to change? Even though it's going down?
Makes no sense.
That is, that was his position, and that's why we were, that's why we originally thought this could be something that could be done administratively, because it's arguably, arguably lessening what was...
And, and the issues in two, two thousand and six with the building permit? And like, it not, was the issue, they didn't pick it up, so then they couldn't get it, but they eventually did get it in November?
They, they got it, they got it in a timely manner. They were hesitant to apply for it, because they were still trying to figure out if they wanted some additional revisions. And so that's, that's why they, that's why they were originally tasked with the board's appeals for enough, for a year-long extension.
So, so there's a valid, there is a valid active building permit in play right now?
How, how, explain to me how you're supposed to make forward progress for a building permit to remain in effect? Thirteen years?
Thirteen years.
I would say that's, that's...
Thirteen years of, of moving on, looks slow.
Yeah. Did you have something to say about that mess?
I have closed permits as old as nineteen seventy-five, so there's just...
Two wrongs don't make a right.
They're all hanging out there. I do remember this one, if, if the zoning had changed from, uh, the sunset had expired. The zoning had been one acre, it was changed and to three acre, and the sunset expired, so quite a lot of people came in at that time to have the benefit of the zoning for ground cover. And it's one of them.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the circumstances, but...
Mr. Chairman, I should, I should also know that they switched contractors.
So who's doing, so Hill was doing it before?
Uh, Shelter Seven, it's pretty small process.
All right. Well, I mean, it's, despite the oddity, uh... So why, what, what did, what happened last time? Refresh my memory, we asked the board requested that further, that further clarification be sought with ZEO silversteing, especially as it pertains to work that may or may not have been done in connection with prior relief. As of six eleven, the staff was informed via email that the attorney met with the ZEO and cleared things up. A cover letter was submitted, along with additional submissions, which were included at the end of the May staff report, and included again. So where, where, I see the letter from Glynn in Glynn, which I, I guess what is what meant, meant by clearing things up.
It kind of cuts off abruptly, though. Is that the end of your letter? No, I know, that's what I'm saying, it cuts off abruptly at the end, there's no, like, so, let me know what's happening. It's in the, end of the staff report, so there's no page numbers. It just seems like we would have, like, part of it might be missing.
Now, you need, now we've seen Glynn's signature, trusting you find everything all right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. But so the last...
I mean, again, I, I guess, I just, I'm just asking the other board members, do you remember what further clarification we were seeking?
Do we have the minutes?
I don't remember.
The minutes from last month.
Can we approve those?
I believe you wanted him to talk with Marcus. Because you wanted to understand why Marcus was requiring him to, to obtain additional relief.
And we had said, right, we had said it would have been helpful if Marcus was there. And he wasn't, and again, it would be helpful today if Marcus was there.
Yeah, let me ask a question. If, if the board would like further, and this is for you, John.
I'm present today.
Further clarification from the ZEO. And instead, we get a letter from the applicant saying everything's great. What would you do?
Knowing that Mr. Glynn just spoke with Marcus? I would certainly take Mr. Glynn at his word for this. Um, I'm, I also know that Marcus can be reticent to throw things in the bag.
Well, I, I don't understand that, if he, I don't, if you sought something from Marcus and he told you no, and now you're telling us it's cleared up, but we see no evidence of that being cleared up.
That's why I was saying this letter seems cut off, because it's like, you give a little...
It's filled in.
Right, there's like a little history of what happened, but then it doesn't really say, like, there's not a conclusion of, like, here's what happened in the past, and
And Marcus said everything's funky, dory.
And now I met with him, and we discussed X, and now we're good. So just, I don't know where the end...
I can certainly appreciate that. I think, I think we, what we can hang our hat on is that Marcus is, has been, I believe there is the initial letter from Marcus in the packet.
December fifteenth seventeen.
Yeah, December seventeenth, saying you need, you need to file with the board, appeals in order to get this.
Was that from two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, from two thousand and eighteen. Which implicitly, the permit is, now that the permit is activated, you have, you would amend it, you have to go to the board, which is...
It's in the staff report?
Yes, on, on number page eighty-six, but it would be the last of the documents that are added to the staff report pertaining to this application.
Oh, so it's sort of out of chronological order? Here it is, it's the last page, right?
Right, yeah.
But that just said the requested work requires approval through the ZBA. Doesn't say, it doesn't say why he, I mean, we're assuming it's because of the reduction in ground cover. We haven't, we haven't really heard anything from Marcus.
Could he be saying that the other permits are no longer valid because of the length of time it's been?
I don't know, it's just weird that he didn't...
Yeah, it doesn't specify, um...
Because I, I, my, my concern with this one is more the length of time versus the if, the reduction in ground cover, I don't, I really, frankly, I don't understand why you'd have to come back if you're have a special permit that says you can build ten and you only want to build seven right now. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think we've had to issue new special, or modify special permits for that in the past, have we, or am I?
We have, I think his concern is that the, the building wasn't really going around for thirteen years.
Yeah, it was more of a timing issue.
That's, he doesn't buy that.
I'd love to hear him say that, then.
He needs new relief, or to modify the old relief, maybe new relief might be more appropriate, and just model it on existing surface.
So is this more of a housekeeping thing for Marcus? Making sure things are cleared?
No, I don't think, I think, I think if we're, if we're predicating it on the ground cover change, yes, then it seems like it's housekeeping. But if it's, if the bigger concern is that this project's been lingering because it seems like even from two thousand and six, right, in the beginning, and not, not that the applicant, I, I saw the letter from Richard where, you know, they waited to file for the application, or to pick it up, because they wanted to kind of give themselves the six months, and then they would have another six months to do something else. And so I think they've been kind of trying to, it seems like they've been trying to work the timing thing on this project. It seems a little long in the tooth, because...
I think, I think all would agree with that. Especially seeing as they are still making renovations and trying to finish.
I just don't want to grant relief because of the reduction in ground cover, when it's actually because the, Marcus thinks the permits are
Invalid.
Invalid.
So what is currently on the ground? In terms of ground cover?
What is currently on the ground is the six two oh seven.
Okay, and, and that was what was on the ground for the original special permit?
The original set special permit.
That, that we're theoretically amending?
I think that was the...
That must have been the sixty...
No, that's what they want to do now.
The sixty-five, whatever, sixty-five thirty-nine?
That's right.
And they haven't done any work associated with that request yet, or have they?
With, with changing to the sixty-four sixty-four?
Yeah.
No, no.
I mean, they've done...
Yeah, so I mean, you, you, I think Susan brings up the point, I mean, this permit could have expired.
Yeah, I mean, if they haven't even started the project. Have they dug a foundation? Did they get an inspection?
I believe the, well...
That, that would be what would...
It's a good, it's a very good question, um, one that I don't necessarily know the answer to. My understanding is that, at this point, the issue is basically reallocating ground cover course from the proposed green porch to a proposed addition.
I think what I'd, I'd want to know, though, that they, you know, I'd like to see a signature card that activated the permit. Because I think the relief would be different, because I agree with Susan, I don't think there's any reason why we would have to reissue a special permit with less ground cover. That makes no sense to me, so there must be...
No, you would just, you would just...
You would just build it smaller.
Slightly differently.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I mean...
It makes no sense whatsoever.
So I'd like to see a building permit card, if it's been going on for thirteen years, there's got to be some signature.
It exists, I know.
I think we should have that.
That in and of itself is a miracle.
That they have it still.
Yeah.
Particularly with multiple contractors.
But it could look like the one that's copied right here, that has nothing on it.
Yeah, exactly, that's the issue.
But there's like, all these HTC applications, right?
But they're all old, aren't they?
No, I know, but I'm just saying, like...
I mean, we don't see any recent...
Well, the only recent thing is the two thousand and eighteen building permit application.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but there's no HTC follow-up to show the changes, there's...
Which you would have had to do to make these changes that are proposed, they're taking stuff away.
Well, I'm just curious what they had built before. Are they, are they actually demolishing things that were previously built in the original special permit? I, I mean, I don't...
All right, in the interest of moving on, we're not comfortable, I don't think.
No.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but we don't seem comfortable with the, the information we have. So can we either, let's just be very explicit about what we'd like, in case another seven months goes by or something.
This was only one month.
It was nine months, wasn't it?
It was, it was for last month, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It just feels like seven months, because we met on the forty-B.
That's probably, yeah, you're probably right.
Seven times since the last meeting.
Can, can we get a, can we either have Marcus in the room, or that would be ideal?
I'd like to hear from Marcus.
I would, too, and I'd like to...
Marcus, you got the staff report, but...
I'd like to see the building permit card, with the signatures that show that it's been activated.
And a clear and concise narrative to how we got here.
And that isn't available?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna, uh... Yeah.
I will tell you that I attempted to do that as non-knows, I pulled the building permit file, and I went to it with a fine coupon, and at the end of the day, I had no idea what was done and what wasn't done. The gap in time, and I think that's where Marcus issued, and I think he believes the work has been done, and they're out there. I don't know if that's true, I believe Marcus believes the work that they're asking for permission to do has been done.
Oh, the plot thickens.
But I don't know if that's true.
All right, so let's hear from Marcus, because otherwise, we're just going to be, we're just wasting our time.
Sure, try to get Marcus from the contractor, we'll get a building, a copy of the building permit, and a better narrative.
Anything else you think that would be helpful, John, because we're...
Anything you're made, I will, I will come up with.
Thank you. All right, so can I get a motion to approve, what's our, what's...
I mean, to continue. He said motion to approve.
I was a test, at least, and you passed.
And I passed. Thank God.
What, uh, what is, when is our next meeting?
July eleventh.
July eleventh. Okay, then don't vote on this. Oh, you were on, well, you were on anyways, that's okay. Yeah, all right, so...
Then who's on it, then?
Well, it would be...
I'll be here.
And then somebody else that was sat last time.
Yeah, Marcus clearly just poofed the way.
He, he left during the deliberations of the forty-B.
I wonder why.
It was still...
All right, anyway, let's, let's, let's vote on the continuance. You can still vote on that, but anyway. So the motion's been made and seconded, continue July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Any further discussion? No, all of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Hey, Eleanor?
Yes.
Can I ask you just, going forward, is it possible for the staff report, when you stick extra stuff in the back, to like, just have it page numbered, or?
Yeah, it is.
Well, it's not, the printed ones aren't.
No, it, it's possible.
Oh, it's possible?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you were saying it's done, I'm like, then I'm, I can't see it.
Then you got a real problem.
The only reason I did it is because sometimes it, it messes with visibility. The only reason I did it is because sometimes it, it messes with the visibility plan or something.
Oh, yeah.
So I just like to be really-
No, the numbers are helpful.
It just makes it, because now I've sort of messed with stuff up in a way. It would just- No, no, it's fine, it's fine, it's, I just, I pulled something, don't worry.
All right, ten nineteen, Rock B. Gennella, trustee, North, North Nominee Trust, forty, I mean, seventy-three Easton Street. Says Nathan Barber.
I pretty much laid it out in the addendum, if you have any of the permits, and we don't have a special screen up here. This is one of these strange anomalies in the bylaw, there's been a lot of discussion about fixing this, like we're probably fixing other things that are setbacks or not ground cover anymore. The bylaw says, if it's intensely integrated, that a shower, outdoor shower, is not considered for setback. If it has a brick base, a flagstone base, a gravel base, a shell base, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't matter how big the shower is, it could be a ten by ten shower and one foot away from the setback. If it's on embedded bricks or embedded flagstones, it does not count for setbacks, and it just counts as a expense. In this particular case, and I gave you a lot of pictures down there, it's down in the middle of the wetlands, which has been better known as the former point three cottages, the Gordon Folks cottages, and now they're also separate owners. The Gennellas maintained some of them after they sold it, yeah, on the roof. This happens to belong to the son of the former owner, and, um, when Nate built it, a lot of these guys that go to these outdoor showers and places them through, revolving through it, they don't realize that the minute they put a platform under it to get you out of the wet ground, they're all wet on that, so you may throw the boat down there. It counts for setback, because it can be loosely interpreted as a deck, or some sort of a platform attached to the house, and even though the house is four feet up in the air because of the flood zone, this is at grade, and everything down there at grade, that grills, picnic tables, other outdoor showers, all have platforms under them, so you're not standing in the mud, which is what it is most of the time down there, because it's so wet now, because after all the times that the ground point is flooded. So Nate built it with a platform underneath it, like all the other stuff down there, and now it's being considered part of the house and a few feet into the setback on the corner of it. If you look at the picture, you can see that they don't even traverse in between those cottages on anything that's on ground, they all have boardwalks connecting all cottages, and all the cottages that are lifted above the flood plain. So at some point, we're gonna have to fix it, that just by virtue of the fact that you're putting a six-inch platform underneath it, that's now integrated mahogany into this shower, it now counts for setback. Now, the variance relief, the board can find their way to it, it's the soil shape and topography. When all these Gordon Folgers, Gordon Folgers cottages were separated into separate ownerships, they made these weird shapes. You can see it on the site plan, they, this one sort of subtracts oil with a triangle in there. And the soil is a condition down there because it is so wet, that's why they're all up out of the ground, so you've got soil and shape. Topography of the structure is in well, it was built out of nineteen twenty, a grand time that stayed in this home. So there's a lot of mitigating factors that could support a grant of a variance with no further inclusion into that setback area. The problem is, it can't wait for town meeting to change the bylaw, you never know what's gonna happen at town meeting, and one, and the two, that's a year away, and they have a construction on which they have to close. So that's where we are, stuck in outdoor shower. That and all other aspects is not considered setback, but nowadays, because it's got a platform. I think I'd be able to make some pictures and ask if we still access it.
Yep.
So that's where we are right now, other than ripping the thing off the building and putting the people down, you can't just take the platform out because it's all integrated, Nate can talk to you about how it's built.
So instead of sinking posts in the ground, I just built the frame, attached the post to the frame, anchor, keep it out of the, um, you know, above the ground, your gear, going in there. You know, if you were to build it, would it attach to the base? You would require sinking, you know, the posts three feet into a very wet soil. And also, if you did that, you wouldn't change the footprint of the shower itself, it would still be the same as the setback. Also, just as one, I think I've uncovered everything, but, you know, in the building permit applications was approved by the, the building, so there, um, approval.
Do you have the drawings in here that show that?
I put it, isn't the elevation of the HCC approved in there, um, and the fact that I submitted?
Well, it's not, it's not the building department's, um-
Oh, it is for setbacks, and it was on the plan, showing where it was.
Specifically, the platform was there?
On the HCC approved plans, and on the, and they went through supposedly, they checked it, and it showed up on the elevations attached to the building.
It does. It just doesn't show up on the site plan.
I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it, it doesn't, where, where does it say there's a platform in, in the setback?
The drawings show it.
No, the floor plan shows it, but it doesn't show it on the, on the, um, site plan. I think that's the difference.
And it does show in the, um, it does show on the site plan, right here.
But it says a platform.
Doesn't say anything about the platform.
It shows here, it shows there.
Where does it show on what, on the HCC drawings?
I don't see it, because it looks like there's air under here, this is what it is, that's surfed, yeah, it looks like there's air here, there's-
Unless it doesn't show up on the site plan, then it doesn't show up.
No, that wouldn't show up with a platform plan, like you're talking about.
No, I mean, the outdoor shower doesn't show up on a site plan.
Oh, it does on the site?
I mean, you could easily make the outdoor shower, if we have a problem, you could easily make it smaller.
Oh, and that went to the building department?
Oh, so you could just-
Where's that?
Well, I guess because it didn't say anything about a platform.
That's what they submitted for the, um, boardwalk CO, he has built for the CO.
This one doesn't even have it, this site plan.
So the boardwalk does not need to obey the setback?
The boardwalk could be five feet out of the ground, and it doesn't have to be a setback.
Why don't you just take the changing area off and just, what's that get, how far does that get us back?
It would probably get you out of the setback.
Right, instead of having like that, you know, that second room.
The problem is, is trying to dismantle this one, is to dismantle this.
The way it's constructed, any alterations, basically, throw it away and start there.
But as I say, the soil shape and topography thing, there is a way to do that, and if the bylaw changes, you know, um, this will become moot point in the path of the decision.
That's when you're gonna be able to build everything up for setback.
Yeah, what about some steps? Why don't you put some steps off the side?
We don't need steps, the steps are fine.
I'm just saying, it's like, these setbacks seem to-
The steps are fine, this is all part of a larger, um, renovation of the structure, you can see it, it's elementally-
Yeah, they added, and they added something in the back.
They added some outside the setback, but this ended up because of that grade, basically, not being able to sink into the ground, and even that grill-
All right, Linda, can I see that page, wait, I want to see the page that she said shows the thing that I can't find.
It's right here.
What page is that? No, 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 you said there was a, you said a page in there that you said it shows that there's a platform on the ground.
It doesn't show it.
It just shows it right there, at grade.
That doesn't, you can see air underneath there.
Well, there's air underneath it even on the platform.
But it doesn't show platform, that's what I'm saying.
So this is where we're stuck here, but we have the soil on tape. I know it's managed, but- It's just one of those anomaly platforms, no platform.
What are you thinking, Karen?
Is it considered a dock? Because that area floods up pretty nice.
It is sort of goofy, I, I will say, it's, it is one of, the workaround is simply not to attach it or to have gravel there.
Just to have gravel until after.
We're not going there, but-
Just to have gravel.
Yeah, gravel. So I, I think, you know, just, just thinking ahead, by, if we were to grant this relief, it's, would be specifically for this, and, and, you know.
Just due to the soil shape and the harmony of this specific block and site, given that-
I mean, it was foolish, because you could certainly have made an outdoor shower that looked plenty big, uh, without encroaching.
Happening in a setback, yeah.
It's just the, it's the maze.
But wait, why is, okay, it's just the platform that makes it encroaching.
Yeah, because the fence can be right on the property.
You can put a, otherwise, it's considered a fence.
It could have been a twenty by twenty shower and not counted.
With no, if it had no base.
So why can't you just take this piece off here?
Well, you could, and you, you could.
Or chain sign, you think?
And then put, and then put a door on that one there.
You could, and then you would comply. If, if that's how you feel, we-
Well, the way it's constructed, I don't think it's so bad easy.
I mean, if you'd like to go down and have to take a post a little bit-
No, no, I mean, I, I, no, I, I can see from the photos, they're really clear.
You could do anything with power tools and money, so, uh, we don't have to hear about it, it's impossible to take it down. It's more, I think, a function of-
I just think, like, it just, you know, there is-
It's been raised.
But you particularize it to this structure, but part of the variance criteria, also, and the second part of that criteria, is that undue financial burden on an applicant, and you spent quite a lot of money on fixing the house and making sure it's not gonna fall away.
Yeah, but I think when we talk about that, it's talking about, like, something that's integral to the house, that, is, that, you know, where it's, this is, this is an outdoor shower, that's sort of, in my mind, is kind of a, an accessory luxury thing that, you know, you don't, your, your house isn't getting, you're not gonna be able to not use your house if you don't have an outdoor shower, so I, the financial hardship for an outdoor shower, I don't really-
It does involve me and everything else.
Or just, you know-
Yeah, but it's an added bonus, it's not a necessity, I don't, variance is a hard standard, you know?
But I have soil and shape, I usually don't have-
How does the soil have anything to do with the setback?
And the shape of the lot, because we-
Because if the, the outdoor shower easily fit in there without the change, without the little maze entrance.
Yeah, you have just a regular-
Not really buying the soil, but-
I'd say if you gotta grant it, that, that's where you can go with it, soil and shape.
The outdoor fence, the, the fence of the outdoor shower, doesn't have to comply with any of this, correct? So if you have the same exact dimension shower, with just posts in the ground, I'm not here, right?
If, if the, if the bottom, if the platform wasn't connected.
Nothing to do with the size of the outdoor shower.
Well, o- only because you put a platform on the bottom of it.
It's only the platform.
That's, then it's considered a structure.
Yeah.
Okay, so the same exact outdoor shell size with posts in the ground, no issue.
And stone bottom.
Now that we just take your feet out of the mud, you have an issue.
The way the bylaw's written.
Yeah, we don't write the bylaw.
Well, you, you, don't you have a issue under the Wetlands Act?
No.
And the orders of conditions, if you put a, um, piling in there, mahogany?
They didn't have to do that.
Regardless, you're putting something in the ground, an outdoor shower.
This isn't, this isn't in the ground at all, it's sitting on top, just to get a weight from it.
Well, it's sitting on something, I mean, you, you either, well, the platform is not sitting on the ground, what is the platform?
But you could have done, you could have done, you-
Bring wood in the ground versus, um, cement block.
Well, so the, here, here's the d-
Wood, rock, cement.
Right, your points are well taken, but, but we're a regulatory board, we don't, like, there's planning and zoning, zoning is enforcement and, and regulatory, so we just, we just look at the bylaw, and we have to make a decision based on what's said, so you're totally making good points, which is why this may change in the future, but we can't change policy.
But you can do an appeal, you can grant a waiver, that's why the variance is there, I know it's a tough one, for variance criteria, but if we can get around anything, I've done decisions for twenty-five years based on simply the topography of the structure, and you've been upheld.
We had that discussion once.
So talk about-
They have not been upheld, they've probably never been appealed, if they had been appealed, they probably would not have been upheld.
Structures don't have topography.
So talk more about, for me, talk more about, uh, the, I mean, the, you've got this board, I mean, I don't know, you've got this boardwalk here, so like, it's, you, the application, I think, says, like, if we don't do this, then people are gonna be standing in the mud to take a shower, but they're gonna have to walk through the mud, if they have to walk on this boardwalk to go to and from, like, why isn't the boardwalk elevated too?
Because you're not running water over yourself from the ground, it isn't going to dissipate.
But then you're, you know what I mean, Linda, like, you're taking a shower, and you're saying, oh, if we don't have this, we're gonna be standing in the mud, it's gonna be horrible, but then you have to go from the shower and walk on this boardwalk to go upstairs, like, isn't the boardwalk also gonna be in the mud and yucky, like? Well, if the boardwalk isn't, then just get, you should get rid of the platform and just have the boardwalk continue, and you wouldn't be here.
It'll rot.
I-
Everything's gonna rot down there.
All right, well, we can't spend all day on this one, so, uh, how does everyone feel about it?
We got somewhere to tag it on, save for the watch.
We got it, we got it. Thanks. Okay, uh, Jeffrey, what is your thought on this?
Not really feeling it.
Okay.
That's just me.
Well, that's too not really feeling it, so, Karen, what, what are you thinking?
Hey, being that I live down the street, I understand how bad the area is, and I know that people have done things to remedy their situation, but this is kinda, as it stands right now, it's, it's not that easy.
I mean, unfortunately, Nate, I don't, you know, I just don't think you understood what you were getting into when you built it, there, you know, there were ways you could have built it and gotten around this, you could have put the posts in the ground, you could have built a platform that wasn't attached, it had saddles and cinder blocks.
But one of the guys don't know that the platform makes the shower-
Again, but that's not our, that's not our fault.
Yeah, well, we don't make the rules.
You know, just taking it as, as a builder, it's, you stick it in the ground, and wood's gonna rot, and so you, you build it so that you have some air to go underneath, you build it on, on, you know-
Well, I mean, you know-
But you also have to build it to comply with zoning.
It's frankly wouldn't have run if it's that wet down there.
The, the, the outdoor shower, the, the footprint of it complies, it's just-
No, the footprint doesn't comply.
But it doesn't comply.
The footprint doesn't comply, that's the issue, the, the corner is-
Two point four.
Two point four from the lot line. I mean, the setbacks are there for a reason, and in this case, you could make the argument, you can't even get by that, if you had a fire, for instance, and, you know, you get two and a half feet, two point four feet, the five-foot setback is there for a reason, and, yeah, it's, but you could put a fence, so now I say that.
Right, but once you put a platform, it becomes a structure, so like, yeah, I could build four things, I could build four fences around to store my bikes, but as soon as I put a platform and a roof on it, it becomes a shed, like-
Or does it need a roof?
I, I, you know, but-
She's exaggerating, yes.
I'm exaggerating to make a point.
Okay.
Just common sense wise, what's gonna happen is, if it doesn't get approved, it gets ripped out, and you put the same exact outdoor shower in.
But then you're in compliance, and we don't have to give you relief.
That's, I just, I think a common sense would outweigh this, this is just a, uh, technical detail in the bylaw.
Well, I think we would all agree that the bylaw has some crazy stuff in it, but, um, you know, we're not a, uh, we're not a policymaking board, unfortunately, although we, we certainly have tried it in the past. It, it is a little bit of a goofy by, portion of the bylaw that, if it, if this were considered a fence. I mean, I don't like it, because I think you could have complied easily.
That's more the issue.
Uh, you could have had what looks to be, you know, maybe a five-by-five outdoor shower, plenty big enough, multiple people even, and, uh-
That should have been approved on that, on the approval process, correct?
Somebody didn't ask.
I mean, that was broken, because that size of shower was granted in the building.
Well, but the building permit didn't know that you're building a platform.
The assumption is that the applicant knows what they're doing, and if, that, you, just because you apply for something and it's illegal, doesn't mean it's okay, I mean, it's your job to know, that you can't put the platform there.
I wasn't, I was a registered architect, who was the applicant, and so I'm going up with this plan.
Well, then he should have known.
Yeah, it's on here.
You should have conversation with him about it.
The building department should have asked a question, because they saw that the fence-
Nah, I disagree with you, I disagree with you.
Why would they, because if the fence is allowed to, and you can't, it doesn't look to, that's why I was asking the question, I, it doesn't look anywhere on the drawings that I've seen, that there, it, that anyone knew there was going to be a platform, because if, if it had said, or if it was presented to who, Marcus, whoever, that there was a platform, I, Marcus would have flagged it.
Well, this, this plan doesn't even show it.
Doesn't even show the shower.
No, that doesn't even show the shower.
Doesn't even show the shower, it shows it in elevation, but you're, you're making the argument that the building department should make that leap?
They have a survey plan, the, they have the other plan, but it's labeled as an outdoor shower, but it doesn't say that there's gonna be a platform, that's the rub.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway.
I had no idea, you know, so.
There's, there's two people that don't appear to want to vote for this, you need four to one, so- If you want to take a moment to discuss it, or?
I would rather have you motion to allow the draw.
I would rather have you motion to allow the draw without prejudice, in case something else changes.
That would be easier.
A lot of the steps went to special permits, there's a lot of stuff that's more than special permits, and that could be, or could be next.
Yeah, again, it's, it's a goofy part of the bylaw.
It is.
The workaround, if you can work around it that easily.
If you can work around steps, and that's not repeated in the bylaw, why can't you work around platforms?
Well, that, that was the, not all of us agreed with that one. But.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, I don't agree with the bylaw either, to be honest with you, um, I think it needs to be fixed at some point, hopefully they address it, but, uh, it also sets a bad precedent if we let this go fly by, cause there's other homes right in that area that are probably, would just say, hey, what about these guys? They did it, you didn't say anything, oh wait, no, you approved, it's not something we wanna deal with.
A platform become a deck?
Yeah, and all of a sudden, it's got a roof, as Susan said.
Well, even if it doesn't, I mean, a deck can't be in a setback, so.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's, what's hard is it's just people just.
Right, it just creeps, it's a.
Yeah, so, it doesn't appear you have the votes, so, what do you wanna do, you?
Withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
Okay.
So, can I get a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Yep.
I'll second.
Susan seconded, all those in favor, say aye, aye. Thank you. All right.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry if I didn't say that. All right, moving on. Fourteen nineteen Graham Burton, Luanne Burton, thirty-seven Tomahawk Road, for the applicant.
Hello?
Hi Graham.
Hey Graham.
You guys might remember, you ran in the variance, uh, started like, January last year, to build my storage building on Tomahawk Road, um, uh, it didn't in the setback, because, possibly, if I can explain, I can, um, go into the details, but the, I inadvertently, due to some other, um, permanent stuff, let that variance expire. And so, I guess I'm asked to, uh, uh, reissue the variance of the, uh, building where, where I needed it.
So there's no change in what you had?
There's no change, it expired, um, no change.
So you have to do something within, within one year?
Yeah, and I.
Malcolm, Malcolm, not two years.
Cause it was a variance?
Oh.
Could you work on it for another twelve years?
So variance is only one year special permit, it's two. Plus three now.
I had to get some, I had to move some parking spots, um, due to the fact that the painting wall in the back was gonna be, that was a crazy expense, so that, yeah, the time.
So, do we have the, I see the, the two thousand and nineteen plan, and again, it's not that I don't believe you, but do we have? Where is the old plan that we?
The decision is in here, so here it is.
Decision's in there as well?
Page, uh, or maybe this is in the special.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got it.
Yeah, two seventy.
So everything, thirteen point two, twelve point three, that's thirty point three, it's all the same.
So we could just reattach this plan to a new decision?
Yeah, man, I, I don't have an issue with it, um, it's, the, the alternative would be, would have been to lay one block and then wait thirteen years. And you would be protected, no.
Isn't the building already made, sort of?
It's sitting there rusting away on the property, yeah. One of these years, it's gonna happen, with your approval.
I don't have a.
Yeah, I didn't have any.
Well, hopefully it'll happen within the next year.
That, that's.
Go ahead.
The variance will have to be, I can just redraft the old ones, this is gonna turn around very quickly, there's a fourteen day turnaround for variances to be filed with the town clerk. Um, just wanna know, for general sense, who's gonna be here to sign that in the next ten days, two weeks?
It's gonna be tight.
Well, what difference does that make, it's not, are you, are, you, I haven't heard Graham say that you're dying to get, are you, literally, is, is the fourteen days of importance to you?
I mean, it's.
It didn't start for a year and a half.
That's for me, that's for me, that's, that's totally required, but I file it in fourteen days.
I got it.
Oh, I didn't realize that, on all variances.
Yeah, well, then, uh, I, I'm also curious, this is an aside, can, are, is an electronic signature? I mean, you can buy property with an electronic signature now.
We have to vote on that becoming a procedural, accepted procedure, if you wanna be doing that.
Like, our board needs to vote?
Yeah, that has to be an agenda item and everything.
Okay, we should do that because.
I'm not advocating it, I'm, I'm asking the question, cause I thought it might come up on the forty big, it didn't, but, uh, anyway. That's neither here nor there. Yeah, much later. Let's move on. I'm good with moving on, I'm, I'm good with this.
I'll make a motion to.
Was there any, Eleanor, did you have any, oh yeah. Just no further expansion like that to the setback.
Same, same, it's basically the same.
Yeah, we're just restating, reinstating the, well, it's a new variance, but with the same conditions.
Is that a motion Lisa?
Yes, it is.
Okay, second.
Could you repeat it?
It's to grant the relief, variance relief as requested, in order to allow the front yard setback intrusion, uh, and set relief should be subject to the condition that no further expansion within the front yard setback take place without further relief from the board, with the same conditions as the previous variance.
And the plan attached.
And the, yeah, attached Exhibit A.
Okay. I'll second that.
I had already seconded it.
Oh, you did?
Do we have any more chocolate that says?
I have some fig bars.
Oh, yeah, that's. No, we didn't vote yet.
We haven't voted yet.
Call yourself. Now I'm gonna change. All those in, I mean, any further discussion, no, all those in favor, say aye, aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty.
I don't, there's two pieces in there, isn't that a chair?
Yeah, I'll definitely share, here.
I have some raisins. From the church.
No more chocolate, Lisa and Susan snarfed all the chocolate.
No, I have one egg.
Put him in his pocket and ran out of here.
Do you want this on the list?
Oh, yeah, yeah, alright.
No, he's not having it.
Fifteen nineteen, nine Swain Street.
I don't need to eat it, I was gonna hand it to you, I eat many of those eggs.
Who are you coming up at the end?
Wait a minute.
Look, you're good.
We seem to have lost focus. We have to wait for Eleanor to come back.
No, well, we can go ahead with this part, right?
Yeah, let's do it. Fifteen nineteen, nine Swain Street LLC, thirty-six Western Ave, for the applicant, the esteemed Mr. Collins.
Alright, hi guys, um, I'm here, unfortunately, I made a mistake on a job on this chimney, where, um, I thought I had enough room to chimney a couple inches, and now it's two point four inches into the setback, thirty, a thirty foot setback. Um, my mistake for not getting the surveyors back to make sure I had enough room, I thought I did, and, um, I don't know, before I'm on the job working, and I said, keep going, but I thought, so the stakes, everything I had, I didn't, so I made the decision forward, and, um, when the asphalt was done, you know, Bracken states here clearly that it's, um, twenty-nine point eight chimney from the setback, for a variance of two point four inches into that front yard setback.
Okay. Everybody at least clear as to what happened?
Yeah, I mean, tore down the house and tried to make everything right, and it's literally a mistake, not a, anything other than that, not trying to cover anything, but that's what happened.
And there was something with the, the garage that was there before was in the setback, and you guys moved it out?
Exactly what you talked about with the last guy on the platform, the shower on the, um, garage had a platform that was removed.
But the gar, the garage is still within the setback, obviously.
Yeah, you guys granted that's a separate permit, but that was granted to stay in it, um, it's a tough, tough lot, and the fact that it's nine hundred feet, and there's only fifty feet available. You know, it's all, a lot of the houses on that road are in that thirty foot setback. That whole Western Ave.
I wonder if that got zoned, the, the, did the, uh, front yard setback change at some point? It got, it got greater, did it change?
I'm sure with these, the house was probably built prior to zoning.
Yeah, the house that we tore down was in the setback, we moved it back.
Yeah. I mean, the house that was there was twenty-four point seven, now, the house.
But it is, it's the same house, they just put an addition on to it, right?
It's thirty point eight.
No.
It's a new house, tore down the existing house.
This is the new house, or that's the old house?
That's the old house.
If that was the new house.
So, was there a reason why you had to be so close to the thirty-five foot setback, I mean, could you've been closer to the?
No, you can see it on the two Asbills, Lisa.
There's a, uh, the H.
Room two seventy-seven.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Very tight buildable lot here.
Two eight eighty-two.
Nine hundred feet deep, but there's only fifty feet available between thirty split setback
Yeah, okay.
And the coastal dune, so.
Okay.
Um, there is a restricted area to build.
Right, and this has topographic issues.
So I set up that other issue that was the same, cause you were talking a couple guys ago about the outside shower had a platform, rule of the platform. And then.
Did it back, did you, did you put it back?
Nope.
It wouldn't be a first, uh.
So, I just wanna say, like, on the record, so this one I see as different from the one, two times ago coming for a variance for something that ends up being a problem, because this is a chimney, and a chimney, I feel like, is like an integral part of the house versus the outdoor shower, that was the point I was trying to make with outdoor shower, just isn't, you know, it's, it's an accessory to the house, this is an integral part of the house, so.
And also, it already has a garage that's
Right.
eleven feet from the property line.
I think with the whole garage is in the setback.
Yes, it is, so, you know, it's not like.
Where is the fifty foot setback from the, uh, from the wetland line, Doug, it doesn't show it on the Asbill plan.
Are these on, do you see it on two eight, two eighty-two, Jim?
Yeah, there's a Bracken plan, Jim.
Basically, the front of the house is, is far forward, it's easy to build.
So the Bracken plan, that's like, that was the existing conditions.
Does not.
This is existing, right?
Yeah, no, I get that, I was talking on the new house.
Yeah, on the new plan, it doesn't really show.
Hard to tell. I mean, I, I, I think, w, could you have built it with the chimney, two and, two point four in, inch, or two point, yeah, two point two, four inches further towards the bank?
As you said, you can do anything with money and tools, yeah.
No, but I'm saying, did you have room?
Yeah, yeah, I.
It could've gone into the house.
Yeah, it could've gone into the house.
Well, or the house could've gotten moved a little bit closer to the coastal bank, I don't see a plan that shows.
I asked him that, like, why?
The house is pretty much pushed up against the fifty foot setback, it's not showing it, but I don't have a plan.
I, I see the fifty foot on this, does that give a dimension?
I mean, I could really scale, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if you could scale it from the garage.
Well, one way or the other, it's where it is, unfortunately.
Well, it's only six inches.
But what, but.
Two point four inches.
But I'd like to know for sure, we don't, we don't have any way of verifying this two point four inches?
Well, no, we know it's two point four there, but we don't know where the fifty foot, see this in here? Fifty feet through here is where you could've pushed, so I'm guessing you could've pushed the house back a little bit, but it's just a mistake, and as I said, it's where it is, it is where it is.
It is a mistake, and that's, I'm not trying to hide anything, it's my mistake, I should've called the surveyor back in and confirmed that I had a couple inches.
I think, I think the coastal dune is pretty close to that house, the fifty foot. Just looking at, you know, I think it's probably.
I don't have to show, but it's very close there.
It's very close.
You could move it forward, the decks are where they are.
Because you could've put them on the waterside.
That's, that's where it is, um, if I could correct this.
Right, cause otherwise you would've put decks on the front.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think you have two point four inches in the back there. I mean, it could've been.
I think you could've avoided, I think he's saying.
I just don't, I, I, I know, we build so close to these lines that any little mistake, we're over it.
Yeah, but Jim, I think the house was, I don't, I think it was, the house was probably already done, chimney was, like, I don't, I don't think it, no? I don't know, did you do the chimney first?
No, he's part off, you don't.
Well, it's part off, but I didn't.
But how would you do, I mean, I'm not a builder, so how would you do the, the foundation?
It was my fault for not letting the surveyor back in to confirm.
Yeah, that.
By moving a couple inches, I had the space, I had a couple inches, and now ended up two point four inches into the setback.
I mean, I think what makes this a little bit different, though, is the fact that there is a building eleven feet away from the property line already, it's not like it's creating
Yeah.
new non-performity.
Right, I agree.
And they do have the coastal dune, not to say that you couldn't have been two inches closer, but.
Guarantee you, I will not do this again. It was the first zoning meeting, and the first staff meeting shows me I don't give back, so I will call the surveyor in every time.
There's no mystery, man, we have the contractor in front of us saying that it's his fault, and it's, and from what we can understand, it's, it's, it's pretty minor, the way I see it, um, so I can see myself past everything to grant.
Eleanor, if they, if he'd gotten the surveyor to survey it when the foundation is in, and it's shown to be in the setback.
Who could've been a special permit at that point?
And it's a special permit?
Well, I don't know, without having considered that.
If they come in before demolishing?
No.
That they could.
No, no, what he's saying is after they poured the new foundation, if they have.
No, I'm trying to explain what, what worked, because if they had come in, if they had any inkling that they might've needed to retain some of that pre-existing non-performity, front yard setback non-performity from the dwelling, they could've come in prior to demolishing, say, you know, some of those were gonna be less not pouring, but were still gonna be slightly, but you didn't know that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about a specific bylaw.
The special permit bylaw.
A special permit bylaw that I believe allows you to get it surveyed at the foundation sta, uh, stage, and if it's incorrect, then it's a special permit.
Yeah, I don't think there's a specific that's called out as such in the bylaw.
Well, I thought it was a new bylaw, well, yeah.
Yeah, Michael always talks about that law.
I mean, it has to be done, the, the error still, I believe, has to be done by a surveyor.
So you're saying different than the?
Yeah, that's the special, that's sixteen C, um, I know what you're talking about, the one that's.
That allows the surveyor to say, I messed up.
Right, yes, there is, that, it's less than five, less than four feet, not, you know, it's something that is in section sixteen.
So we, we, we had a similar case, I think, on Surfside Road, right, uh, where the
Yes.
contractor came in and said, sorry, we had to pour the
That was a little war.
Foundation, and I didn't wait for the surveyor, and.
Yeah, that was, that was totally, yeah, I, I remember that one.
Yeah.
Then we granted it.
Which we granted.
I can see my way to the two point four inches, no, no, you know, you don't get any bonus from that ever, you're not asking for it, the, the building itself was outside of the thirty, there's already the existing garage, it's further back from the road than the existing house was, they could've kept the house. And then this Eleanor does, said, sort of played that stupid game where you keep a couple pieces of wood.
Yep.
And I think what we always say is, we're always asking, you know, we wanna see someone come in and, so what do you say, follow their sword, I think? The applicant's.
I'd like to make it more painful, but, yeah. So we could continue it, so we guess it'll come back.
No. I would've had it pain enough.
I think he's had his punishment already.
Alright, so let's move on, somebody make a motion.
So moved.
To, the public is.
Public is asleep.
I get that, uh, okay, so.
Second, Carol's motion, was it?
The grant the relief as requested? Alright. No further intrusion, blah, blah, blah. Alright, so the motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, were you aye on that one?
Jim, no, Jim is voting.
Jim was voting, thanks, Doug.
Had you taken part in the chimney.
Sixteen nineteen. Sixteen nineteen, Paul M. O'Rourke in the Woodsland, oh, you guys in? O. O'Rourke, fifty-four Prospect Street, for the applicant. Brad, tell us your story of whoa.
So, I'm going to reach up from all your, um, this property, it's in our one. It's a non-complaining lot, which is like a three hundred square feet, which would be a five thousand square foot area. And we rebuilt the cottage in the same location that it was before, with a two hundred and sixty square foot addition at the back of it, one story. I included a photo of the previous cottage. And you can see that the front door has no stairs, it has two steps right onto the road. And, um, this created a very unsafe condition, both for vehicle traffic, considering the size of the house, and the building, and that it should have a proper parking. So, we could create a platform, clear the door, and then put a handrail to stop a forward motion in perpendicular ways to Prospect Street. There's a lot of vehicle traffic on Prospect Street. The hospital's right there, you have emergency vehicles. It's a big truck route, it's a bus route, and there's no sidewalk on either side of the street. So we saw a potential, um, you know, for harm in both the union and the public. And we felt that having a handrail would force you to walk in a parallel way to Prospect Street, that's the part. So that created the further intrusion in the little setback, twenty point seven feet, I give it that the, the step configuration that we built.
Is that it?
How far are we into the setback?
Well, it's completely in this, like, the, the building is at the setback, it would be four years now.
I think the question is how much closer you are than you were.
It's point seven of nine.
So you were two point seven, and now you're three point four?
I think we were...
Oh, no, you were point, you were point nine, yeah.
But, but we are, we went uncompliant in, in terms of the setback, and we're not compliant in terms of the building, um, egress. Now at least we're compliant in terms of the, of the building, egress.
Ah, where's the...
So, we can't always get, we'll get the run of the door right on Prospect, and then we'll...
I mean, you could ha- I, I think maybe to Jeff's point, or maybe not, where's the Asbill of where we are here?
Well, two ninety.
I mean, you could, I hate to say it, you, you could get rid of the railing, it's probably not required. And would you then be compliant?
Is the, is the step, is portion of the step actually off your property, is it in the roadway layout?
It looks like it.
The, the building, the building is at the back of the step, right, and you can see where the... Within feet of the...
No, I get all that, but I'm, I'm wondering if, if part of the step is actually off your property.
No.
No, no, no.
It's all in.
It looks like it, though.
Yeah, it might look like it, it's a fat tent we used.
But on the Asbill, you have the measurement, it's a stamp.
I see, um, do I have it?
Don't talk, I mean, I, I know where you are, but you just have to identify yourself for the tape. Cause other people don't, um...
Oh, okay, uh, wait, okay, this is...
Oh, yes.
So that's existing.
We're not, we're not...
That's before.
No, not according to this.
That's before.
Why is it just locked that part off?
It was in there.
Well, the argument being that...
It was in there.
The only one I see, Elizabeth, shows that it looks like it's...
In the setback.
There it is, this is in there, see, it's...
It's just a little worse than it used to be.
To the, to the property line, this is the distance to the property.
Point nine. And now it's point two.
It's right there.
So it's point seven, which is probably eight inches.
So, yeah, you could probably off that.
But you'll never get the eight inches.
Yeah. This again, I, I know who you are. I know you.
It's, what did they say, Eleanor? The, uh, oh, yeah, you got, now you got a three foot platform, that father told me, I don't care who says what, you wanna, you're gonna have a three foot platform there. Now you got another step coming out there, after that three foot platform, these steps we kept inside.
Well, you still could go sideways without the railing.
My, my, my concern, I'm sure we, I'm telling you a handrail or two, somebody's not, like, serious. Because you, you have no sidewalk there, and you could follow that platform and right onto a street where cars are moving faster than you.
It looks like you have put privet plants there. In the roadway layout. I think you'd have to remove that.
I just, I was trying to look at...
There is some, there is some mail on this one, which we don't get often, but from, from a neighbor.
She, actually, I sent her the, uh, documents that were submitted by Mrs. O'Rourke yesterday, which are in the staff report. And, um, I sent them to her long application, and she wrote back this morning. Thanks Eleanor, all set. Not sure exactly what that means, but I hadn't heard from her, and she's not quite explained.
And in terms of, of the major letters, she, she mentioned that, like, we haven't gone to HBC, that we have gone to, like, the, the SPH company, and like, the HBC, I included the approval.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand that either.
And then she said that, um, you know, that the, the fence on Forty-Ninth York Street was built at seven feet high, and this was the existing fence before, and this is the new fence. So it's the same, essentially the same thing, and the same thing. And, um, about the edging, I planted, uh, we planted sixteen postigent, uh, oaks to create a hedge, it's a ten thousand dollar hedge, they planted three feet of center, and this is the first year of their ends, we're just gonna grow, and need more of them. And they have the ability to also plant on their property. But we did, we did, we did ours. And what started, she was inconvenienced, it wasn't...
Alright, is the house position basically in the right spot?
Exactly.
The house is exactly where it was.
Okay, cause we, we certainly have seen this unfortunately before, and what about the new, uh, the new bylaw that allows the steps? Why doesn't this step contain you?
Uh, it's very specific as to how many steps and how many seasons, I can read it to you if you want.
I do.
It's two steps, isn't it?
I did check with Marcus on that. And so did Mr. O'Rourke. We try them.
But wouldn't, doesn't this seem like this would be the perfect, this is like this, the, the lot that, that bylaw was designed for?
Instead of...
I know, and it was, it was also revised, but somehow it didn't...
Was it the platforms are, have to be, the platforms have to be outside the setback, that's probably the issue.
The steps.
The steps can be in the setback, that's probably the issue.
Ma?
I thought it was the whole thing up to twenty, twenty square feet.
I, I don't know, I'm...
What do you mean?
The whole platform too?
I thought it was like the egress with the steps up to twenty six feet.
Do you have the bylaw?
I'm looking for it right now.
Yeah.
Can be in the setback?
I think it was maybe up to a certain, up to a certain height.
That, that platform can be dangerous if it goes back to where, or where it was originally, so I think you got the picture.
Yeah, we got the picture, and or we got a, a plan, it says it was only, uh...
So it is, a struc- the definition of a structure is anything constructed or erected to use within part six, location on the ground, structure shall be construed where the context allows, as though followed by the words or part thereof, and shall include, but not be limited to buildings retaining walls which support buildings, platforms, more than two steps, providing access to a structure that in total are more than ten feet in length and two feet in depth in all districts except for, blah, 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 so it does include R1. And Marcus did not...
Two platforms in that are considered a structure.
Reject.
Alright, um, we certainly have granted relief, we're, you know, I, I remember the one off of, uh...
Derry Moore.
Derry Moore.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
But then we had one also, wasn't it, like, on the high, or somewhere with stairs?
I don't think I have a problem with it, but I have a, I really have a question as to whether that, uh... I, I don't understand how this thing, well...
What?
It looks like it's, it looks like it's over the setback, I mean, it looks like it's over the property line, Mike, Mike Connery says it's not, and I just don't...
It is, Jeff.
Well, the lo- is...
No, I, you know what I think it is, is the...
I, I cut, I cut the back, the first step off.
Yeah.
Moved it back.
It looks like the steps are not as wide as the platform on that side. You've cut the step in.
Well, I'm gonna get, it's probably an inch, or about, um...
Well, they said it's about two and a half.
He's not doing anybody any favors.
Um, I, I, I think as part of our relief, if you were to get it, you can't have the, uh, you can't have the plantings in the roadway.
How much of the property on the property line at first house, because the angle is, is...
Yeah, obviously, if it's, if it's on the, if it's on the property, it's on the property, but we can't certainly look the other way when the, uh...
I mean, it does, it does provide, you know, some protection for someone walking.
I, I hear you, but if you get permission from whomever to put it in this, in, in the roadway, go ahead. I, I, I know that.
Well, is that even in our wheelhouse, because I know there were, there were several, uh, well, up on, uh, Center Street, going up?
Well, yeah, there are tons of...
Yeah, people at Privet hanging over the street, and, yeah, it's, it's a matter of, until somebody complains about it.
Alright.
And then it becomes DPW, and DPW comes up and sweeps it.
Yeah.
So we, I would probably say, let's stay away from that.
I agree.
Okay.
So, do you leave that out?
Yes, I would suggest that.
I agree, Karen, I think it's a DPW issue, and they deal with that.
They'll enforce it, it's an issue.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think...
Well, I think the, you know, again, it never comes to their attention.
It does sometimes.
People complain.
People complain, and they did, they did a big sweep on right across from the cemetery there, that dirt road that cuts through over from...
And if it becomes a vil- visibility issue, they certainly complain, and they make you cut.
But it might actually be aesthetically
Better.
more pleasing for the streetscape and this...
Well, there's always a reason for it.
I think if it was on a corner or something like that, I would, I would agree more with you, but I think
It's fine, we're gonna move on. I don't feel that strongly about it.
I do feel strongly about it, but...
You can get your hedge trimmers out, put on a fence.
Maybe I'll complain.
Oh, you could complain. Now you'll know who complained.
I'm not gonna complain. Uh, okay, so, anybody in the audience wanna talk about this?
We've lost everybody.
Do we have any concerns about the neighbor, though, for real, 'cause she did write, was any, I don't know, I lost it.
Yeah, let's look at that letter, 'cause, uh, I don't really understand what she means by...
What's this, the historic district structures, the historic structures?
Advisory board?
Is that a real thing?
Well, they, they advise the HCC, but the HCC doesn't listen to them often.
And you still have to, I think the disconnect was, you still have to go to the HCC.
She got together with, with the HCC, and she wanted, uh, no parties and no deer hanging in the yard. That was her first, uh...
So when's the party?
I think both of those are reasonable, well, certainly the first is unreasonable.
It's gotta be as nice as that woman is, like, wow, you can, it's not my nature.
The only, the only thing I think that, um, was the, do you have any issue about the, like, the, um, Phil and the, um...
We applied for a canyon one.
And you got, you have an application, okay, do we, do we even care about that, or is that a...
Well, we care about it if it was done without approval.
I mean, the rest of it just seemed, I think, like, regular first stuff.
This was a...
What we did is, is they, they pushed against the fence.
But the, uh, did the...
There was a wall there before, it was just all rotten.
That's it. Was the, uh, house elevation, did it stay?
No, the house is sitting right exactly...
You didn't pick it up, did you?
That's what I promised them, that's why I got that house to stay there, if we didn't change the house.
You didn't pick it up?
You didn't pick it up.
Estate elevation.
You decided not...
I mean, if you look at, you know, where it was and where it is, it's the same, I mean, you couldn't get like a more, much more gentler construction thing than what we did. I don't think, we built it, you know...
The only thing that's changed is there isn't the lattice top.
Why wasn't the six foot fence with the lattice put in?
Because that's not what was there before, and so when we started looking, again, if you look at this image,